All right, well, let's get started. Hope Ron can join in. I didn't see, I'll check my email again. I didn't see anything about him not being able to make it.
Did somebody already text him? I can do that. I'll text him right now.
All right, we'll call it to order. Hopefully Ron will be here any minute. So, since we only have three hours today, I really wanted to try to utilize this time as concisive as we could. And I think with all of the changes in society, the world, our community in the last, what it's like, three months, four months, I think that it could really behoove us as a board to ensure that this coming year, we have some really specific goals and that we're very intentional with how we're moving forward in the coming year because it's, I think, going to be another year full of a lot of change and uncertainty. So that's kind of why I thought we needed to revisit the strategic plan anyway, but then once I kind of started digging and recognized on the website, our district goals have not been updated since 2016. Greg has some knowledge of goals in 2018.
I fixed that.
Did you fix it? Okay, great. But I still kind of felt like even 2018, I mean, it feels like September was a lifetime ago. 2018, we really need to decide as a board how we want to move forward. So that's why I did that. But I hope everybody got my email regarding the BCC and sharing of articles and things like that. And then also really quickly, I had an idea for the boneyard pile because that's been kind of the thing that's been going on. I think a really simple fix that we could at least start with right now would be to have a shared Google document. Just so in that way, if things come on there, all of us as board members have an ability to add to it and then we can edit it as we go through them. It's probably not an ideal situation or setup, but at least it's somewhere that we can all access and all see what we have. If there's any thoughts about that.
What do you mean boneyard?
Yeah, so it was kind of this idea of if board members or if community members bring forward topics or ideas that they want to kind of dig deeper into, how do we keep track of that? How do we ensure that we're, you know, addressing these things as much as we possibly can? We haven't really had a way of keeping track of them and also keeping track of if we're addressing them or not. So I'm not sure if anybody has any other ideas or thoughts about a simple goal that she could share.
And I think this answers your question, but kind of on the side of that would be, it's going to bring up work sessions. We talked earlier this year about doing a lot more of those, you know, like every other meeting even. And that'd be a good time to talk about those things. You know, if we schedule those, like every other meeting, we did have a work session and a board meeting. Do that.
I think whoever, since we're so close to electing the chair for next year, I think whoever the chair is for next year needs to figure out the schedule of when we can have those work sessions and get it a little more part of our normal practice, I think, to have them.
I know the city of Newburgh has a tracker that when public comments are made and suggestions are made, it's added to the tracker and it's it's reviewed at meetings, how are we doing on the tracker?
Okay.
Something like that.
Okay.
I don't know what they use. I could find out for us.
That'd be great. You've got the easiest connection to a city councillor.
Yeah, yeah, I'll check with them.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. Thanks Rebecca.
I think it also is available to the public, so the public knows what's going on.
That would be ideal.
Yeah, I'll find that out and get back to you.
Cool, thank you. Okay. They already ready to jump in to goals? All right. Let's review. Let's review the goals really quick here. Let's see. Can everybody see the board packet? Or pull up the board packet? Okay. So currently we have seven goals. Continuously support improvement and student achievement. I'll just do little quick blurbs on them. Enhance student learning and development through arts, CTE, extracurricular activities. Implement strategies that promote safe, respectful and responsible students. Support the overall wellbeing of students. Support district goals through the alignment of resources. Protect the community's investment in facilities. Fostering partnerships and communicating regularly. So how do we feel about those? Do we feel like, is it a comprehensive list? Do we want to go one by one? Do we want to just start all over? How's everybody feeling about our current goals? I'll start calling on you all, one by one. Okay, Brian, how do you feel about the current goals?
It seems like a fine list of generic goals.
Bob, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, the first thing that jumps out to me is wanting to add some goals, a goal at least, if not a couple, to address what we want to see around distance and hybrid learning with school being different currently and most likely for a while. I think we should address that in our goals.
I think so too. These are, and I'm envisioning us having setting goals for the next school year. So not, you know, long-term, long-range. So I agree, yeah. Rebecca, do you have thoughts around the current seven goals?
I like them. I'm thinking that I wish we had measurable ways to track if we're meeting the goals. Or, you know, how do we know that what we say is our goal, we've actually done something towards that? And I don't know if one of the goals should be also in light of the racial situation, if we should make mention of trying to become more anti-racist or aware of the inequity of the situation somehow. Or make sure there's equality for all.
Welcome, Ron. I'm glad you're here. We're just kind of quickly going through the seven current board goals and getting members' take on it. Dave, do you have thoughts about the current set of goals?
Yeah, I mean, I think I kind of agree with Brian. I think they're kind of what we do as a board, you know, they're kind of, they're there. I agree with Rebecca too, you know, I think we need to have ways where we're tracking these so we can really feel like throughout the year that we're we're really making progress and, you know, not saying this to, you know, we've talked about this, Brandy, it's like just having a district person come in and give us a briefing update to me is not enough. I mean, I think we need to have, you know, some way to track that through parents, you know, students firsthand, you know, throw us out there and we actually get our hands a little bit more dirty and find out if we're really making progress in those areas. You know, I guess that would be mine, I think. Again, they sound good, you know, but I think we have some big ones to go on, like Bob said, you know, the whole how's that going to, you know, look, I guess I just like to be a little bit more like Rebecca said, get some direct tracking rather than just listening to a long presentation by a board member. I like those sessions. I mean, I always get something out of them. They always, you know, are good, but I'd rather have those be shorter and then find some other ways to track them.
Inez, do you have thoughts on the current goals?
Me and I think that they're good goals. I do think that we need to improve them or improve our goals given our current situation. I also think that part of the reports that we're receiving are to see how we are meeting them at a district level in the different areas. So I don't think that the reports are, I mean, maybe they can be shorter, but I don't know if we still want to receive all the information, how we condense that. So maybe we can talk about doing that.
Any thoughts on the goals?
Yeah, first, let me apologize. My daughter and her family and my grandsons are here and we were playing a game and I lost track of time. The, I like the goals as stated. I don't think I want to take anything out of the goals. I would kind of in line with Inez just said, I think that the goal should say more about diminishing the achievement gaps as a, to me, it's one of the ways to measure whether we're serving everybody equitably. It's not the only way, but certainly an important one. And so the first one about continuous improvement, I think we could add something in there about while reducing, continuously reducing or significantly reducing achievement gaps. And notice how I struggled with the continuous or whatever, I don't know how to frame it. I think what needs to happen is under these goals, some operationalizations should occur, as we say in academia. As you put, you describe what it is you mean by this goal. How would you know this goal was was being met, which we haven't done, we haven't said, we know we mean this goal when X occurs. And that would help us, I think, have more focused reports because we were looking at hallmarks and standards for meeting the goals. I don't think we can make them all numerical, you know, that, you know, scores of eight moving to nine or whatever, some of them are easily numerical, but some of them would not be. But still, it's, I think it's still possible to get, which would be relative, define them in some way with sort of intersubjective, as they say, which is that everybody could understand what that standard means. Somebody else could come to it later and still understand what we're shooting for and be able to recognize whether we got it or not. I agree that also something needs to be done about, yeah, anti-racism. I know what that word is trying to get at. It doesn't seem to me to capture the breadth of what we're trying to accomplish. But, I mean, as a start, just for our conversation now, I think it's good to call it anti-racism. Because we need to, we still need to identify the systemic parts that we're not paying attention to that make equal opportunity unavailable to everybody. You know, I like to be more positive and talk about it as truly equal opportunity, but I don't know if that really captures it either because it's easy to forget some dimensions. So somewhere in there, there's a term or a collection of terms that help us define what we're trying to accomplish. And I think that, again, tracing where we're doing on achievement gaps is part of what we're thinking about there. It's not the whole picture, but it's still an important part. So I guess I would ask for some implementations, some additions, probably to the number one about achievement gaps, maybe an eighth standard relating to anti-racism otherwise. And then an effort, probably led by staff, making proposals to us about how we could operationalize the goals as we redefine them to give us, you know, milestones to see how we're, see whether we're making progress or not. I'll say one more thing about this. The last meeting when we, I think it was the last meeting when we talked about the middle school transition. Again, that's something where we just don't, I don't feel like we know how we'll know when we're succeeding entirely. That we're looking at test scores and that's important, but it's not everything. And we don't, I don't want to ever drop the test scores from what we're looking at, but it's possible that we could understand what's happening better if we had other standards clearly in mind as to how do we know a kid has successfully managed their sixth grade, for example. So the idea of operationalizing our goals is one I want to emphasize. Okay, that's enough.
I agree with what you're saying, but I also feel like, I feel like seven goals is a lot. Like, these are seven large kind of umbrella statements. And I worry that seven is too much, you know, do we, is this the year that we really focus in on saying four and really kind of develop those measurements and our focus?
I don't know if you're invited me to respond particularly.
Anybody, yeah.
I'll let somebody else respond personally, I think.
So.
I do think that maybe we need to think of something smaller sometimes. Obviously, we're doing a lot in the district and not everything will be necessarily in our goals. But there's some things that are going to be in policies, some things that are going to be in operational. I do think that if we have seven, I'm thinking in terms of my experience with a nonprofit organization. If you have seven programs, your organization is spread thin versus if you're focusing on core, on a three, four, five, whatever, smaller or not, not smaller, a smaller amount of goals. Maybe you can be successful and you can measure the success easier rather than measuring a larger quantity.
One of the suggestions I have going forward regarding our goals and sort of tracking, something very simple I think we can do is that when we look at the agenda of a board meeting, we can look at each item and see if they fall under any of the board goals and put that on the agenda. So, you know, if we're having a report on teaching and learning, well, that's goal number one, you know, board goal number one. So that way we're just constantly reminded that we have goals that we're looking at things that fit under them. And if we start seeing agendas that don't have a lot of attached goals on them, then that's an issue, right? So that's just one thing I was thinking of.
Yeah, it kind of is helpful to see with our policies at least, what laws they apply to. So I think that that's a good idea to have what goals our agenda items would go with.
Hey, Brandy. You know, off all you guys said, you know, earlier and just kind of made a point of how to condense or whatever, I'm not getting your exact words in this, but like one thing we could do with our presentations from the district staff, which would help them a little bit, is it's kind of like when you're at the school. A lot of the meetings could be shortened up quite a bit if the information was put out ahead of time in an email format or something like that, and then the presentation can be shorter. I mean, I could give you specific examples, but there's no reason to do that now. And then we could take that and and you know, talk about that more in a meeting because sometimes the presentations get pretty long. A lot of that information we could just get on our own from that district staff person. Be prepared going into the meeting as a board member with that information. Now gives a little bit more time to dive into those.
Yeah, I mean, I, it feels like some of these current goals are more like value statements than they are actual concrete measurable goals, like number two is enhance student learning and development through arts, professional and technical opportunity, extracurricular activities, enrichment experiences. Yeah, of course, we want to do that. And of course, I think as a board, we support that, but I don't know how I don't feel passionate about that goal, you know, so that's why my thoughts are around do we pare down to some very specific measurable goals that set the direction of us as a board for the coming year?
I agree because that's kind of like saying, well, we just want to be awesomer.
Of course, yeah.
What's that mean? I mean, you know, by maybe taking those seven and put in a board member next to each one of them and say, then we could give some feedback at a work session on, let's say you take goal number one or whatever, goal number two, like you just mentioned. But then some of your small goals you're talking about would be probably like Rebecca said, a little bit easier to measure because we could come back. And then if we have questions that we don't think we're doing well or if we're doing great, then that's better feedback for the, for Dr. John's staff.
Who, is anyone opposed at simplifying or clarifying the goals? You're muted, Ron.
Yeah. Hit it twice, sorry. Sorry, hit it twice. I don't know that I'm opposed. There's nothing here I want to lose track of. And I understand the need to focus effort and I don't think that we, having seven or even if it were to turn out to be eight goals, means we have to be focusing ever on all eight. This year might be the year to focus on two or three. I don't know that we have to eliminate them. Just cutting them down doesn't help us with the problem of tracking real progress. That's why everything that we have as a goal needs to be operationalized so that we know what we're working on now in that area. And that applies to number two and applies to all of them. So my preference, I think, right now, just for me, speaking just for me, is that we don't eliminate anything. We might reorganize them a little bit for our help, clarify things we want to say, make sure we get the anti-racist thing in there. And then and we certainly can say that this year we see goals number two, five and seven, or whatever they are, as the ones that we need to work on most this or focus on this year. The board can help the district by helping there be focus on the things that, from the big picture, need to be worked on. And that's what we should be helping to do. And and in our conversation with the senior staff or the superintendent, helping us figure out which things are the ones that are most workable and the most doable for us. And also to help us measure what can we do in the next stated period, the next two, three or four years? What can we look for and try to help people move that direction? That's, that's important. I don't think it means that any of this should be dropped off. A simple way to help with simplifying it, I think, well, I don't know if it's simple, but it's an idea. Numbers four, five and six are all about kind of the same thing. They could all be part of a single goal if we were to. That's not my dog, Warken, so.
Me, sorry guys.
And he's still there. And so that might be a step two.
Yeah.
To consolidate some things, but no matter what we do, we still have to operationalize them.
Yeah.
And four really isn't even a goal.
You know, this is, that's what I feel like they're like sort of value statements. I mean, we want to do these things, right? What are our actual goals as a board for the coming school year?
Yeah, Ron, I understand what you're saying about not wanting to lose focus or thought on the things that are listed in these seven. But, you know, someone was just thinking about, well, how do we use these goals? How have we used these goals over the past year? And I don't recall when we've really talked about the, these seven goals. You know, we said them last year and it hasn't been something we've revisited. Which to me, in my mind lends a lot of weight to the idea of, you know, reducing them down to just a couple of things that are a little more short-term and concrete. You know, I like a lot what you're talking about operationalizing, like really explaining and saying what that each one means. Like, just kind of randomly, one, another goal that popped in my head. You know, we're looking at going out for a bond in November. Passing a bond in November would be a good goal to set for ourselves. And so when I think of, when I think of these goals, to me, it lends itself more to more short-term, concrete things. Like this year, we really want to focus on XY rather than the whole breadth of things that we are keeping track of.
How do you guys think it would be beneficial at this point to kind of do some brainstorming regarding what goals each member kind of thinks we should focus on and then we can start to sort of pare it down a little and then see kind of what we currently have? Is everybody comfortable with that?
Brandy, can I add for one thing?
Yeah.
Before you get to that, so just a reminder that these seven goals are the goals that are in the strategic plan. So you could even, I'm not suggesting that you talk about it this way, but you could even eliminate them as far as having this list of seven because you've already got the strategic plan. So those seven goals are in there. So it's not like you're losing any of them. You may want to consider looking at a goal or two or three, or whatever that might be, a smaller subset of goals that you want to develop that fit within one of those places in seven, what is an area of focus? So I will use the anti-racism as an example. That might fit under the, under it might be under the support and the continuous improvement because that's really about rigorous, relevant learning aligned to academic content standards. But you may want to talk about what those content standards are. So are we, you know, working on the systemic parts of those? The, you know, the passing of bond in November is another example of it's, sorry, I'm doing two things at once. It's under the facilities investment, right? And so, you know, those, those all still fit, those goals you have are the seven that are in strategic plan. So you don't have to have those seven separately. You can say, we have the strategic plan and here are our two or three goals for this coming school year, things we really want to focus in on. And then that way, the seven aren't being lost because they're still part of the strategic plan. There's still the stuff we're going to do and operationalize. Now, we spent all that time with a huge amount of people putting together the plan. That's what they came up with. Okay, so you're not losing those, but maybe there are, you know, two or three things that are really at top of mind for all of you or for some of you that you want to talk about and then make those your, your goals without making a list of 21, you know, let's focus on those. You still have your seven because they're in the strategic plan. So you don't, you're not really losing anything by leaving those more generic kind of goals in place. Because that's about, that's, that's the operation of the district and those are our general long-term goals. But there may be something very specific that you want to focus on for 2021. And then that would kind of let you not have to feel like you have to choose one of those over the other because those seven are already in. So maybe you find a way to add in a couple that you're really interested in for this year for a focus area. So just a, just an example.
That's what I was thinking, that it, that hearing the goals, it sounded like it was a strategic plan in numeric spelling out and that I, I support Joe's idea about choosing two or three goals that, that are detailed out or materialized out, whatever, however Ron put it, I would go for that.
Yeah, you know, just as I think about, again, how we, how we want to use these goals, you know, kind of building on these ideas, you know, one thought is, yeah, we put a lot of time and effort into getting input from the community, from stakeholders, developing that strategic plan, which includes these seven goals. The board goals that we set could be just, you know, drilling down on the few high priority areas of that wider strategic plan that'll still exist, still be a guiding document for the the district. But there are just a few things that we really want to drill down on and, you know, would help us focus through the coming year.
I'm seeing this is sort of the direction the board's going, but I'm waiting for a dissenting view. If anybody's uncomfortable with go with kind of building on this direction. Okay, Ron's still muted, so I think it's all right.
That's kind of random. You can't judge whether I'm muted or not.
Sorry. Okay, well, then how about this? Is everyone comfortable sharing maybe their top two or three sort of directions that they would like the board to focus on? Just to start kind of brainstorming and seeing where we all are?
Yes.
Yes.
You want to start us off, Dave?
Well, I guess my first challenge to all of us would be, you know, what are we hearing out there? Sometimes I think when you're in the schools, you don't always hear what's going on. I mean, we're in the community. What are we hearing, you know, from our individual districts and the people we know, you know, our neighbors, everything like that. So I think that's, that's one thing that sometimes I think gets missed out on. That's one thing that sometimes I think it's missed out on. I'm trying to think, Brandy, I'd like a couple more minutes to.
Yeah, no problem. No problem.
I would like the board to try and minimize the impact of budget cuts to the student experience.
Yeah.
Brian, do you have any suggestions how to measure that and how to go about doing that?
Well, I mean, how you go about doing is a matter of where you're cutting. As far as measuring it. Not off the top of my head.
To start, though, yeah, we can kind of, I I. I'm thinking we're probably going to start seeing some similar threads here. So maybe we can build off of that one. Yeah. Do you have any others that come to mind right now, Brian?
Ensuring that we are. Being safe with our kids.
Safe, like in regards to like COVID, like health safety. Okay.
Or prioritizing student health and safety.
Okay. So Bob, I know you said the distance learning hybrid. Do you have other thoughts?
Yeah, really, the two that come to mind first, you know, like I said earlier, the one goal would be to pass a bond in November. And the other would be to. You know, increase, reinvigorate, start using. Citizen advisory committees, ad hoc committees to help inform the work of the board, which is something we've talked about, but. Haven't done.
Okay, I'm just writing these all down. So sorry if there's a pause. We don't have the big white sheet that we can scribble on. Rebecca, do you have any thoughts on where you'd like to see some goals?
I would like to make sure that through the distant learning that we. Are aware of the the equity gaps. And. To to ensure that all the all students have access and. I think that goes along with the food and beans are keeping our kids safe and the distant learning that that can be part of it. And that each child is respected for who they are. Thinking of the the racial situation. That we that we are aware of things that that we. We look at the curriculum and we look at situ the systemic situations and hear from our students what they're experiencing.
You know, Ron, Dave.
I mean, I think one for one for me would definitely be investing energy, time and attention in imagining a new education system. So going along with what Bob said about a hybrid model. I think. It's time for change. So I'm excited for us to focus our efforts on reimagining education. As well as with safety. And health of our students, you know, it's important to have a. Learning safety, and that's where I would focus the equity piece and. And talk more about this anti racist. Environment, which we should, I think, dive deeper in as well.
Could you expand on what you mean by learning safety?
Yeah, I mean, I think that if there's systemic racism happening, it creates for a not. Safe learning environment. And that it exists. So how can we work together to bring ideas and dismantle some of that? In this reimagining of education.
I like this this larger sort of umbrella idea of reimagining education because it feels like it fits with the calendar. Relook that we're looking at and kind of, yeah, this hybrid model. And then, of course.
Or, you know, picking back up the start times, what that looks like.
Ron, do you have thoughts? Where? What are you feeling passionate about?
Well. I think the reimagining is going to be forced upon us. So I want us to do the best we can at it. I think it's a good idea in general. But it's the kind of thing that's so big, we tend to put it off. But with the COVID virus and even with the way of rethinking how our. System works for everybody, whether it works for everybody. These are two things that are on our agenda no matter what, and we cannot ignore them, or we're not even being timely. With the needs of our our district. So. And my concern about it is that that in the reconfiguration, the restructuring, our response to both of these. Environmental. Requirements, I don't know. That that we can maintain academic rigor and. That we can improve how our system works for everybody. And so those are, if you ask me, what are the top two things? Those are the top two things. I think we can afford to postpone the bond more than we can afford to postpone this other work. Not that the bond isn't important, but the bond isn't going to be one of my top two or maybe top three priorities this year. You know, for me personally, because I think the other, this is the moment in which we've got to work. On on how we do different kinds of education and not leave people out. So what Rebecca said and what Vanessa said, I think both feed into that.
So. The notes I've been taking, it's kind of this heading of new education system and under it is learning, which would be like calendar start times, the hybrid model. Equity to be our workaround, the anti racism and safety, which is our workaround health. And I think that. We should, I agree, Brian, of course, health and safety for the kids. But of course, then you got to, I think, include staff in that as well. And then the bond. So that's four, but I don't know if that's if I've captured what everybody was feeling.
So I tend to side with Ron on the bond, I think. You know, first, the bond package that was built was built for the old world, and I don't know how much it applies to the new world that we're in. On that, I think politically. The chances of passing $140 million bond in this environment. Seems low to me.
And I think, and I think you're right, Brian's right about this in the sense that if we are really looking at. We want to have the most flexibility to make the kinds of changes that we might need to make, given how education is going to be differently delivered and and whether we find and when we can identify. Places at which some have been put at a disadvantage. I would, I would like the bond to be built out to be finalized, our proposal for that bond be finalized after that. Because I want to have that all in place. And this is not something I would say every year, but this year we have such a confluence of influence and events. But it seems like this is the year we have to make those other fundamental decisions before we design the buildings around them.
Hey, Brandy.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Ron, were you finished there?
Yes, I was.
Okay. I think. I agree with what Brian Rhonda said too, and I think the. Educational model has to change. And. You know, a lot, some ways we're doing stuff the way we did it, even when I was there. I mean, holy cow, we're talking a different world ago. And then it seemed like every three years we get a new superintendent or principals and they're changing up the new educational thing and. And that's not a knock on Joe or anything. It's just, I'm just saying, we we tend to. About every three years. That's how that's how teachers feel. We change everything up. And I think now in this changing world. Looking to educational model, what we expect from Dr. Joe and his staff. Should be a top party. I also want to just challenge everybody. When we say rate, you know, we talk about, you know, we want to have all of our. Students challenged. We want to have all of our kids, you know, get a great experience, right? Well. One thing I'd like to have this discussion with you guys because I really want to hear your points of view on it and get deep on this one subject is. I want to see every single kid have an amazing experience in Newburgh Schools, just bottom line. And that ties into a lot of the things we've already talked about. No matter how you float that, you guys, you're going to have gaps. They're just going to be there. That doesn't mean we don't try to take every single kid, no matter who they are, and give them their best shot in Newburgh School District from the from the first minute they get there. But when we say like, you know, we really want to make school better, a lot of these goals here and everything, we have to look at every single kid. And if we have a kid now who could go from going to PCC to to George Fox, or or we could have him going from George Fox to Princeton. We need to, we need to challenge every single kid. And to me, when you raise the bar to every single kid, it raises the bar for every single kid. And I've seen it work my entire coaching career. Nobody gets left behind. Nobody gets a short end of the stick. And I think that's my big deal is we, I guess, I don't feel safe talking about this on this board because. Sometimes I feel like when I do, you guys think I'm trying to be mean to to low end kid or something. I'm not. Matter of fact, it's almost the opposite. If we really raise the bar truly to every single kid at Newburgh High School, everything gets better and to get there, there always will be gaps. Those certain words, we have to be careful how we use those. But I think every single kid in our schools, at the end of the day, after it's all said and done, Ron's kids just graduated. We got to get them ready for that point when the dinner plate's broken and they're ready to be on their own. And the best way to do that is not to sit back and make this easy on them. It's to. It's to raise the bar with our teachers, our assistants, our district staff, the school board, every single kid. And that school wants his best shot to get his best education at Newburgh. So when they're out there, when they turn 18, they're ready to go, whatever they choose to do. And that's my my thing is is. There's going to be gaps, you guys. I don't know. It's. If we just challenge every single kid and every single teacher and every single person the best we can. We did the best we can for that kid in Newburgh.
You know, Dave, I'm I'm right with you on the rigor part. I would say that my boys did not get the rigorous education they could have gotten. But I also don't, and I also think there will be gaps, but as long as the gaps are so reliably along the lines of ethnicity and race. And income, that's not a system. It's not like, it's not like ability is determined by those factors. So if the gaps are falling to those factors, there's a problem with the system.
I totally agree.
Okay, so but that's why we have to keep talking about the gaps. Because we're not talking about the gaps of a normally distributed population where everybody had the same opportunity and had different outcomes. If that was the case, then there wouldn't be, if that was the case, then there wouldn't be distribution differences between different kinds of population. So something, something in our system isn't serving some parts of the population the same as others, unless we're assuming something else about the distribution of ability. And as you know, from from your coaching, the ability is not distributed about on ethnic, on ethnic lines in coaching. And it shouldn't be the same in the classroom. And we're not getting that result. So there's something wrong with the system. So I agree, we need to work on rigor, that rigor always should be pushed up. But it's got to be pushed. When we pushing it up, we want to make sure that everybody's getting advantage of that rigor. Right now they're not.
I mean, I guess I I I agree with your stance, but how does that look to you?
How's what look to me? The improved rigor across the board?
I want to see every kid. Do the best they can. I don't care. And if we got gaps in our in our teachers, because we're not doing our job as a school board to get them ready, then let's. That should be our number one priority above bonds and everything else like right now. Why aren't we getting that done?
We should.
Our principals need to be held accountable to that. You can't imagine that's not their goal right now. It just blows me away that that wouldn't be their goal like right now. So to me, that would be priority number one.
Dave, if I put down professional development, will that sum up what you're saying about in regards to getting teachers ready? Or is it something more than that?
Well, I mean, I think that's a. That's a tough question, Brandy. I think, you know, Joe can answer to that too. But I think sometimes I've told you this, I think we get polished reports from the schools. I don't want polished reports. I don't care who that kid is. I want them to look at, if they would, if they came to a board meeting and sat down and said. I'm getting challenged in Newburgh Schools and people are helping me move forward every day. And then I would, I would say on this, on the on the racist and the bias and that kind of stuff, if. I'd probably back up and say that's number one, because if 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 that's going on at all, we got to get that that done right away. I mean, that's got to just go away from Newburgh completely. If we have anybody related to working with our young people that are that way. And then they got to go. I mean, we got to, that it's not acceptable for a kid because we're. When you're a coach or a teacher or anything like that, or we're even supposed to as board members, we have to report anything that's going wrong with that kid if we see it, right? We're we're supposed to be mandatory reporters. And I always took that super serious because if anybody, you know, when you're in charge of young people. You're in charge of their safety and what their well being when it comes to their school experience. I think then what you said earlier is bringing those kids into, I think Bob said, maybe bringing those kids into. Our our school board meetings and letting them talk to us. And again, this isn't a knock on anybody, but I don't want a polished kid from the principal. You know, the captain of the baseball team, I want just just a cross section of kids. So we're getting good, solid, just raw feedback. Well, not like hearing what we hear, but it'll sure be helpful.
I feel like it's a fair statement to say that as a board, one of our, if not, if we're going to number our goals. If we do or not, but one of our top goals, if not the top goal, is going to be a focus on equity and anti racism. Is that a fair statement?
We might disagree on wordage, but I think so. I think that's got to be.
Sure, we're not at wordage yet.
It's how they're going to get their best education in our school. There's no way.
Brandy, can I ask Joe a question?
Can I go for it?
Joe, what is underpinning the achievement gap in the Newburgh School System right now in your opinion?
Well, it's interesting because we often talk about achievement gap, but the achievement. Is the outcome. And what we actually need to focus on are the opportunity gaps because what we really are talking about, and when you're talking about equity, equity is an outcome. But when you are identifying systems that continue the status quo, which actually most of you have talked about. What you have to look at then are. Working on the systems that continue to provide the same result we get over and over again. So if you look at over the history of it, we make some improvements here, we do some things there. But the work of actually dismantling the systems that we have, you know, I think that you've talked about. I think, you know, as you called it, reimagining the ed system, you know, the educational system, time for change. And I'll tell you that what that means is that we are about to embark on, and which I totally agree with. But we're going to have to switch up the system to provide more. For some people and less for other people. Because in order to provide an opportunity for kids who are behind, they have to make abnormally. Positive growth, meaning they have to make more growth than they normally would be on their trajectory. So when you start looking at the groups that we can basically draw a circle around and say, here are the groups who aren't achieving. Here are the groups that have historically underachieved. It's really not about the achievement. It's about how much opportunity we have given them. And we have some supports in place, you know, we have some. Things for EL and we have 504 plans and we have special education and we have some support classes and things like that. But. When looking at this, and we even talked about this in this hybrid model. That when, if we were to propose that some students will be coming two days a week because that's what we can do for our cohort size. And there will be other groups of kids who come four days a week. We have to be prepared to say, we believe it's important to provide more opportunity for some children because they are in need of more support. And that is a statement that makes some people, make a lot of people crazy. It will make people upset. Because you're going to talk about now. Um, because you're going to talk about now providing additional things for some and not for others. But if our, if the true goal of the board, and I, I think it really is, is to provide, is to see gaps uh, being reduced, that means we have to actually work on the system, which is the opportunity gap and not necessarily the achievement gap. The achievement gap will eventually change by providing additional opportunity for those who need it. Um, and that, you know, when we come back to talking about anti-racism, that's about going after the systems that don't provide as much opportunity. When you raise the rigor, which I think we can all agree, uh, is not a bad thing to do, but you also have to then raise the level of support, because you can't just say, now we've raised the bar, everybody reached the bar. We're still doing the same things we've always done, right? We've got this class, we've got that class, we're doing this. Now everybody can take AP, but only certain kids are gonna be able to make it, because we're gonna keep teaching it the same way, keep doing it the same way we've always done, which doesn't actually provide additional opportunity. It just provides, um, the shell of an opportunity. But if we're ready to move into this next phase and, and talk about what equity actually means, um, then we're gonna have to really consider, um, a full dismantling of the system that we have in place. Uh, that don't provide additional opportunity for some, and that means um, some less opportunity for others, those who don't need as much support. And so we have to find kind of a balance in between there, but.
And what are, what are those systems?
Um, here, let's see, give you an example, um. So as a, as a, for instance, we've got math classes at middle school, and you have sixth grade math, you have seventh grade math, and you have eighth grade math. Now, I know we have some kids that we accelerate and do those other kind of things, but if you were to look at that and go, does every sixth grader need the same level of math and the same level of support? I would say no. Same thing for seventh graders, same thing for eighth graders. And so when you look at diversifying those things, can you find ways that you can provide additional support for some students in math? Um, which means they may have, um, you know, smaller class size, you might have a, a different teacher. You might have additional adult support in those rooms. Um, which means that your other places might get larger size, you know, kids who are all achieving at very high rates. You know, if you're, as a friend, if you're teaching AP Calculus, you could probably do that with forty. But if you're doing, um, you know, uh, the basic math for, uh, trying to get kids up to the basic Algebra II, you might have to have much smaller classes. You might have to have classes of twelve. Um, or, you know, I'm just making up numbers, but those kinds of things. So shifting from uh, the egalitarian model of everybody kind of gets the same amount, and we try to balance everything out. Um, you know, I, there always is some pushback about, uh, people call it tracking kids. Uh, and I would say that working in groups with people who have similar abilities actually allows teachers and, uh, support assistants uh, to focus in on the skill sets they have at the level they have. But that's, you know, those are, if the board decides to move forward with, um, truly looking at all of our systems with equity, uh, that's, that is the journey. We have to talk about reducing the opportunity gap. So I think that those are, I mean, there are all kinds of different examples of that. I think this hybrid model coming up with the thing around COVID will be one of those kinds of things, um, that allow us to really look at how we do the system differently.
Joe, tough question.
Hey, Dave, can you wait a second? Bob has been trying to scooch in for a second. Go ahead, Bob. Dave, you're not.
I was just gonna say, you, you know, and I think as we do this, you know, Brian, what you just did is is gonna be necessary to ask really tough questions about, okay, what, what system are we talking about when we talk about systems? Um, and there's gonna be some big broad answers, and there's gonna be some more granular answers. You know, one of the challenges is that, you know, when we look at our system, there are probably very few openly racist people operating within our system. I, I would be surprised if that was a real common thing. But we have things that are much more subtle that do go on. You know, we've, we've adopted CKLA. And we've had, my understanding is, uh, quite a bit of success, and it's been good for us. But we also have in there units about kings and queens. And the kings and queens are all stereotypical fairy tale European kings and queens. So the kids who look like that feel comfortable, can see that, can look to that as a role model. It doesn't doesn't show people from other cultures who had kings and queens. Or even question why kings and queens should be exalted and, and stand as our examples. These are, these are the kind of things that are, we're gonna have to have challenging conversations about. And be aware of, you know, how hard we can push our system, what constraints are outside of our control and how we can push against those and make Newburgh work the way we want it to work. Yeah, I, I for one am very excited to take on this deeper, broader view. But a lot of folks get really stressed out by change. It can be very difficult, you know, when we were at the, the tail end of, uh, Kim's tenure, one of the things which a lot of people came to us with was feeling like they were burned out on change. They, there was initiative overload. And that was valuable feedback. We took that feedback, we've worked with that, but the amount of change, the amount of initiative that was going on within Newburgh at that time just pales in comparison to what we're looking at right now. So we need as a board, if we're gonna talk like this, we need to be prepared for the stress that that's gonna put on our system and the pushback that folks are gonna have, because if I've been using these handouts for twenty-five years and they just, they work really well for me, it's gonna be really hard to be challenged. Um, that those are not necessarily inclusive. If we're gonna push our staff to say, you know, maybe some of the supports we give in the future look completely different than what we've done in the past. You know, maybe catalyst has touched on it, but if kids are home three days out of a school week, m- maybe some of the supports we give are teachers reaching out, calling them, visiting them, you know, doing things that we haven't typically done as a system. Um, that can provide them supports in a whole new, reimagined educational system.
Dave, do you have thoughts?
Yeah, I do. Uh, I mean, if we're gonna talk like this, I mean, I'm hoping it's safe enough just to say whatever, right? Are we there? I mean, are we in that spot where we're gonna say it?
We've got to, we wanna get deeper, right?
I mean, I, yeah, I mean, Joe, what you're just saying there is like, i- it feels like when I hear you talk, it feels like we're, we're saying, well, who's gonna get left behind? And then are we teaching to the middle? I go back to the thing where I have never done any way different, where every single kid gets my best shot to give them their best shot. And it's been amazing to see who comes from the bottom and passes up the so-called gifted at, you know, at the top. I've seen it a bazillion times, and it's like coming from a low-income family, coming in from a very dysfunctional family as a little kid, going to our schools in Newburgh, seeing what other kids had. And what we didn't have. And then it always came back to the fundamentalness of, we just had good teachers pushing us forward, and then you end up passing people up. Because sometimes, you know, certain people just don't work that hard, some people don't try that hard. Uh, some people work their tails off, and I just know coming from a low-income situation, you strive for that, because when my, my educators put that up there, we weren't teaching to the middle, they were just teaching us the best they could. And I know it's a different world to, today, we look a little bit different. But who's gonna be the kids underserved now that if we don't serve everybody? And I get it, we might have to have smaller classes, I understand that. Cause I was, you know, I never got a good math teacher until college. I never even got one. I mean, got great history, got great, uh, English teachers, but not math. So I get that. So I get smaller classes, whatever we have to do to make this thing work, but I support every single kid getting our best shot at Newburgh and not, uh, not underserving anybody. I don't like that statement. Because.
Yeah, I'm actually talking about, go ahead.
No, what if that's your kid though, Joe? What if that's your kid? Or my kid, we're sitting there going, well, wait a minute, just because they're talented, uh, just because they're whatever they are. You know, when we were handing out those diplomas, it was so much fun to stand up there with all you guys and do that with some of you guys. And it was so cool to see some of those kids that I've seen all through the years come up and get those diplomas from Newburgh High School. As a school board member, I'd like nothing better than every kid coming across that stage to get that. And they'd come back in three or four years from now and say, awesome, Newburgh High School experience. And this is why. And every one of them is gonna say it, cause I've heard it so many times. I got pushed, I got challenged. The kids know who the, the good teachers are. Usually the good teachers are the tougher teachers that push them. And that's not a brown, black, or white thing, that is just a kid thing. That is just, that's not a poor kid, that's not a rich kid, anything. They, they just wanna be pushed down the road. And be ready for the real world.
Do you have thoughts on this? Joe?
Oh, sorry, I, I, I cut out a thing. Yeah, you know, here's, as an example, and you brought up my kids, I'll, I'll bring them up too. My kids are gonna be just fine, because they are, um, they're white, uh, they're male. They have two parents who have advanced degrees, live in their home, who make them actually do their homework, who can help them with their homework. Uh, who, uh, have a regularly, uh, kind of a scheduled time to, uh, do reading, which they hate to do, of course, but we make them do it anyway. And so my kids actually don't need as much support as maybe somebody else's situation where they might need it. And I would hazard a guess that when you were coaching, I know it was true when I was coaching, is that I had to coach each kid differently, because each kid had different needs. They had certain kind of talents, they had certain kinds of supports. Uh, but not every kid who came to me on my court uh, had been to the three thousand dollar volleyball camp that they were, that they were gonna go to. And I, I had to treat each one of those players slightly differently to get the mess, the best out of them that I could. And when I'm talking about, uh, some kids getting more and some kids getting less, it doesn't mean, uh, not giving every kid uh, the most that you can. Um, but we cannot say that every kid who walks in my class of thirty, that they all have the same level of support, the same, uh, level of experience. Because we, we could never apply the same amount of support to every child if I divided up my sixty minutes and I gave every kid two minutes of my time that day. Uh, if I did that, the gaps would continue to persist. And so when, um, we look at systems of support, we have to apply um, more support to some and less support to others, if the goal is to reduce uh, eventually the achievement gap. If it's not, then we will continue to do exactly what we do now. We, we can teach and teach and teach. Yes, good teachers make the difference. I, that's, I mean, that's a really, um, it's a true and obvious statement. We have to have the best teachers we can. And yes, we need to do, we need to do work with them under professional development. But I think it's also, um, important to remember that every kid comes to us with a different set of circumstances, and we have to at least acknowledge. Um, if we want to make these, if we wanna reduce the gaps, then we're gonna have to find ways that we spend additional dollars on some and fewer dollars on others. And that's, I mean, that's, we have to apply things differently, and we can't just say, everybody's gonna get something and everybody's gonna have higher rigor. Uh, because everybody is actually an individual, and each individual has a different experience. And so how do we, how do we group people with similar experiences, and then how do we give them more to get to that next place? And so it's not really about reducing opportunity for others, it's just to giving some others more. So you start at a place and then you add more. Some kids may get less, um, additional support, but, uh, you know, that's, that's the balance in all of this. If you want to reduce the gap, then we have to apply um, fuel to the place that needs the most on the, in the engine. At least, that's, that's kind of how we identify the systemic problems that we have. Um, and look at those. So I, I think that that's, that's an important piece to remember.
So if we take on, I'm calling it anti-racism and equity now, just as a large umbrella term, since we haven't sort of twiddled that down into a more specific thing. I'm hearing, uh, probably board development. I think as a board, we would have to do a lot of work looking within us as individuals. I think we'd have to really take an equity lens to our policies. Um, and, and really having some big conversations with Joe around how do we support this system that will give some to, extra to others and less to some? Is there, is there other, is there other areas that you can see that as a board with concrete goals, measurable goals in this area?
I, I don't, I just, I'm not quite done processing the conversation that we've been having around Dave's comments and, um, as I said earlier, I think bell curve distribution of achievement is true in every aspect of human endeavor. Which doesn't, it's just the way it is. And and if we, I, I don't think that the fact that there is a bell curve is a problem, that some people far out uh, uh, achieve others and so forth. What bothers me is when that bell curve shifts based on what your background is. Every, no kid deserves to be born behind. They don't choose where they're born. And if they end up behind as a group, we're not doing it right. That has to do with race, for sure, and ethnicity. It has to do with income levels as well. There's lots of reasons why people are born behind, and no kid deserves to be born behind. They, they don't have, every kid has the same right. So, um, while I'm not troubled, I think, Dave, you're right. In general, there will be a distribution. As long as that's not the same distribution for every kid based on their demographics, we're not doing something right. And it isn't the same uh, opportunity for every case. And even in athletics where it might be, you might think it's even, evener, it doesn't necessarily, as Joe points out, most people, many people can't afford the extra camps and things that some kids get, and that gives them an advantage, and they become the best player on your soccer team. And they didn't start with any more ability, they just got more training. And if that's, if that's racially or ethnically conditioned, then that's wrong. We gotta fix it. So the way you fix it is you help the others catch up who started behind because of things that they didn't control. For now, we are using race and ethnicity as a way of sort of short, for short, um, shorthanding the conversation, because we do see clear gaps based on those factors, but it applies to all the kids. Any kid who starts behind should have a chance to catch up. And, uh, and until the, we see that the bell curves align for people based on where they're born, rather than just then diverge, we have to do something to catch up. I don't think we want a society which are permanent underclasses, and we still have one. That's not fair.
My best player ever, ever, in Newburgh history, tennis, but most decorated player ever, poor family. He outworked everybody. He wasn't very big, he wasn't very athletic, he wasn't the smartest kid. He outworked everybody, and he had no opportunities to go to camps and everything like that. And, but I go, I come back to what you guys just said, I agree. Whatever we gotta do in Newburgh as a school board to make sure that we're giving every single kid their best chance. But maybe like, say at the high school, Ron, your kid just graduated, right? You said maybe they could build a bit more rigor. And I think what Joe says too, is like, some kids are gonna need more support. I agree. Maybe by the time our kids get to their sophomore, junior, senior high, at the high school, if they are in a certain situation and the support is there, uh, just because people have money at, at home doesn't mean it supports there though. But, but if they have that, that chance, then we can still push those kids, uh, get them out to more internships and get them out into more opportunities out in our, in our district and stuff like that. If we don't have enough teachers to make sure they get challenged super hard, because I don't want them to be the underserved. But I want the kids, at the, at the same time, we need that math class. If we only can only put ten or twelve kids in a math class, that's what it's gonna take to help that kid get his best shot. And I support that too. I just wanted to see that, you know, I don't wanna see your kids or anybody else like that come out of Newburgh High School going, I wish it would have been a little bit better for me. You know, because you know, as they move away from us, that's the question they're gonna ask. You know, were, was I ready for the real world? You know, were, was I ready for the real world?
I'm willing to risk a little bit of some kids thinking that wasn't best for them outcome. We have a better distribution of opportunity reflected in the outcome. So, sure, there are going to be families who are grumpy. That their kid has a bigger class size, for example, than somebody who were trying to help catch up. But that's part of the cost. You can't catch up. You can't make, you can't make it not be permanent generation after generation repeated without somebody being given a a little bit of extra help. And I don't want it to be repeated so that you can predict somebody's outcome by how they look. You you cited an individual, and that's a great individual, it'd be a, somebody great we should all know, and I think they'd be example to all of us. When those individuals are evenly distributed amongst the population based on their demographics, then we're there. Well, they're not now, certainly not economically.
I will say, um, it's, it would be a much easier sale to tell the community that we're going to give group A less in order to give more to group B. Um, if the quote unquote advantaged populations were performing better, because I don't think even the, you know. The kids who are advantaged are where they should be. In our school district. So that is, that is one challenge.
I just need to say something. Um. I won't, I'm going to use the board as an example of. How the system impacts things differently. We're talking about this. We all came prepared. We all got voted in equally. But the experience on this board is not the same. I'm struggling in this meeting. Because I feel that my lived experience is being negated. Yet I'm qualified to be a part of this. I'm a community member, a former student. And I don't know if any of you see that. I mean, I know that we're trying to do this, but I'm using my experience. And I quote, I know that this is a privileged position. Being that I am a Latina of lighter complexion. I don't get judged as much as others. I don't suffer the same oppression as others. But I'm here. And just sitting through this conversation is painful.
Could you speak to why you feel your experience is being negated by this conversation?
Because I am a person of color, a woman of color. And. The system is not in my favor. And still I'm here having to listen to something over and over and. How do we work together to understand or come to an understanding? I applaud you, Joe. Because I do, you captured exactly what I wanted to say about we're reimagining education into me. And I know it's going to be hard. I know. If sitting in this call is hard, I know the community is going to struggle. And I don't know if I'm answering your question. Of how this is painful or hard, but. Hearing that you all are not understanding that having to offer more support for others in order to meet, to have them meet the bare minimum. That that's where the misunderstanding is.
And this, my comment to you is like, I, my whole comment wasn't to have anything to do with race though. My whole comment was just about, I'm just talking about kids in general. I mean, I wasn't talking about that. I was just talking about every single kid we have needs their best shot. I mean, I saw, I don't get that, that that comes back to that.
At this, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, you know. I think that at this point, with everything that's happening in our. World, in our country, in our community, there is undoubtedly a different experience for people of color. And that goes to every single classroom. I'm not faulting the teachers for that. I'm faulting the system for that, and I'm faulting history for that. So I'm, it's not about individual teachers who are good or bad. It's about the system in which they're operating. And it's the system in which we're perpetuating, unless we take a very specific stance against this and say, no, we're reimagining this education system. And we are going to do it with the knowledge that in order for all of our children to have an opportunity at academic achievement or personal growth or social emotional learning or whatever it is we say. We have got to put in our system supports specific to specific children. I don't, that's in my mind, not up for debate. I don't think. I think we all have our personal journeys and understanding what that means, but I think that. We have to move forward with this, and we have to come to the basic agreement that the system is not serving students, and we've known that for a long time.
You know, another thing that I've said before is things are the way they are because everyone is doing exactly what it is that they're doing. I could have easily continued muted through this next two hours and not said anything and moved on. But speaking up about this is my contribution to shifting things. I'm not saying change is going to happen overnight completely, but even just a little shift, if we can move a little bit, just a tiny bit. Eventually, maybe something will happen.
I guess, and so I'd like, it'd be fun to do, it'd be. Good to do would be to take your experience as. Let you know.
This, this is, this is not fun, and I'm not a case study. I just wanted to bring this from my perspective. Into the situation to give a different understanding of what is going on at a systemic level, using my personal experience on this board.
Well, you have to share your experience if you want us to benefit from that.
I don't have to, and just calling it out is me telling you how this is different.
It, it might tell me that it's different, but it doesn't inform me how.
I don't think getting specific examples of sort of the systematic racism that Inez personally has experienced is going to. Add to the conversation. I think the conversation is around, we know it's there, so now what are we doing? And I don't think hearing, you know, that she had a bad math teacher or that somebody said a racial slur to her once. I don't know that that's going to add to this at all.
No, I'm not asking for that. I'm just, I haven't been hearing a lot from Inez in this. So I don't get the benefit of her pers- perspective. This is the first time that she's really spoken up about this, and I appreciate that. And I know it's, I understand it's hard. But I don't think it's fair to Dave to to. To qualify what he said as negating your lived experience.
I already mentioned Dave. Uh, this isn't about Dave. This is about a system.
I guess, and this, my thought with you is like, if you were on my team or I coached you, I I would value your feedback immensely because of just what you just said. And sometimes the the greatest way to change. The past to move forward, and I agree with you totally about our educational system, is. And I don't think this is just limited to. One group of kids at our school. I think it's a, it's, you know, an overall change of shift in our, our stuff that. I would want to know what you had to say. Because I always did it that way, whether I had a Latino or had a a black student, I had. A a brand new student, exchange student, whatever, somebody was coming to the, this thing that was. Not typical Newburgh type kid coming in there and and they were, they wanted to be part of our whole system. It was so fun to. To add their experience to what we were doing, and it always benefited us. Because it helped everybody learn. I think that's what I'm trying to say. I think what Brian is trying to say is. You have a unique experience and and a set of words that you can give us that 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 may help this thing move along in a real healthy way.
Um, I'm, I'm going to just step in quickly as um. This is a, an uncomfortable place for um, a a person of color to be in right now because. And it's not coming from a bad place from, from the rest of us here, because we do want to hear and understand and learn the, the lived experience, but. Um, it's also challenging, I'm going to guess, and and you don't actually have to say anything, Inez, but. It is challenging for the only person of color to try to define all of those things. When we're talking about 400 years of kind of oppressive systems. And so I I think. As, it's a really good conversation. So I I don't really want to stop it in this way, but I do. Want to posit that it might be really, if you're, if this is really important for all of us, and I think it is, and I mean, that's what I'm hearing from all of you. Is that we really do need to look at some very specific. Um, training workshops, things like that, that are around specifically around um, equity. That come from outside trainers that know what they're doing. I know there are lots of them out there, but I think if we really want to learn about this. We're going to not be able to only just take from um, someone who's already uh, in that chair. I I think we need to really consider uh, learning about this uh, in a more systemic way, because it does add a lot of pressure. Um, to our sole person of color. And I think that that's, um, I think it's a lot of additional stress. It's, it's actually making it less safe. Uh, to be part of the group. Uh, and that's not because people are being um, bad people, because I I think. When you have curiosity and each one of you have mentioned, you know, help me understand. And so I, and I, I really honor that. Um, but I think also, uh, we have to, to to be inclusive of all of our board members. I think it would be important for us to think. Um, you know, what kinds of things can we learn from additional trainings and workshops? And and I think those are. You know, it's not kind of a one and done. This is, this is a journey which we want to, on, upon which we want to embark. I'd be more than willing to get us going. This is something that we're going to be working on. It fits in with uh, the anti racism focus, which we're going to get to, which is just one part of this larger system, but. But I think it's going to be hard for us to try to tease out an entire. Um, lived experience from someone from our community who is part of this board. And I think it would be. I I think we can get there by having these broader goals, and then we can talk about how to operationalize. Uh, developing an equity lens for the board and asking the really tough questions, which I actually really appreciate because it gets us into a really. Uh, a a more true conversation. Um, but but I I don't think, I don't think we can continue to ask uh, Inez to explain uh, her lived experience. In a meeting like this, because I think it's very uncomfortable. So I would just like to offer that, and maybe we could. We may even need a quick break, um, Brandy, for a moment, and then uh, maybe come back. And I know Greg, you, you had put something in the chat, that there was something that you wanted to offer. Uh, before, but it might be the right time for us to to take a quick break and and then come back and. And put some, some goals out or some things we'd like to talk about specifically for us to then work on operationalizing.
Yeah, I agree. So let's do 10 minutes, 3:35. Everybody come on back, and you can just stay on the call. Let's take another five minutes. It doesn't look like too many people are back yet, but let's essentially do seven minutes. Let's say 3:40. Since you two are the only ones on, are you okay? Okay. Great, when we come back together, would you like to give us your comment? Or is it, where are you on that?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. Okay, it's 3:40. So let's get restarted. Uh, go ahead, Greg.
I just wanted to reflect what I was hearing in the conversation. The combination of things, I'm not, I don't want to speak for Enes. I want to speak for what I heard in the conversation. When part of the conversation is about not wanting um, to continue to focus data, looking at race and the achievement gap. And when there are comments that say it's about those who put the effort in and the time in and who work hard. That draws an implication that the data we've looked at over and over again, that show people of color performing at a lower weight, at a lower rate are therefore the ones who are not trying as hard. And I think I've heard several board members um, address that differently and remind us that we're looking at groups of people, not individuals. And how the need is to remove categories of ethnicity and ec- and economics from showing these kinds of dispar- disparities in achievement gaps, that that's what we're talking about. Is how to not make who we are and what our background is be dependent on be what causes these gaps, but instead actually get to the place where the things that were being described, like how much effort you put in, where you are, those are the things that determine, as opposed to assuming that's why a group of people is performing less.
Thank you. I think it's really clear that I'm going to just say personally, I think the number one goal for the board should be around anti racism and equity work. And I think that should mean some of the training that Joe was speaking to for us as a board. I think that means looking at how can we adopt an equity lens? And I'll really understand what that is, so that we can now then look at our policies and our systems. And I think that's a huge, huge goal. That's not going to be an easy lift. And I think um, it would be great if we, we have to start it. And I don't know what the board feels like about what will fall under that goal, or what we think the measurable outcomes will be. But I think that that's where we need to move the discussion at this point. Obviously, board training is measurable. Do we do it? What type do we do? That type of thing? Adopting an equity lens, that's measurable. Are there other things under this that we need to think about? Or include in this goal?
I'm not sure how to answer that question. I've been hearing about equity lens since I got on the board and I know in general what it's about. I don't know that it's as specific as it in my mind, it's not as specific as it might be in some others as to what it means. I want to take a little bit broader point first though, and that is that the difficulty we're having in this conversation is partly because it's such a small group and that means for every person, the burden falls on one or two or three people. And uh, we can't get the big picture. And what we do as a board is important to prepare ourselves to deal with these issues, but I think we should remember that this is in the context of the entire district, having to do similar types of things. And in the larger process, it may be, in a larger center, setting, it may be that we can overcome some of the barrier that we have in this small group and that no one person would be asked to try to translate their individual experience into a group experience. Or to represent by themselves the experience of the entire group, because of course, they'll all have had somewhat different experiences. And so I'm hoping that what we do as a board is integrated in some way with what the district as a whole will be doing to make sure that we also have access to the broader ex- uh, broader range of expre- of experience and communication and whatnot. That the district as a whole will have. And that doesn't help us with that question you asked us directly, I don't think.
I think it does.
But I'm thinking that, that, that just, I want us to think, remember that what we're doing needs to be in that, in that larger context, and we should find ways to, to take advantage of that larger context.
I think it does, because when you were speaking, it reminded me of listening, listening sessions. I think that we really need to be very specific and listen to specific groups on their experience uh, within Newburgh. So I, I think it does run.
So I mean, in fact, I don't know how much, I, I haven't really thought this all the way through, but I'm but I'm thinking that if that's the case, if we're going to do something that's, that's sort of district wide, that that should be a major part of, maybe not entirely of what the board does too. I mean, that should be our experience as well.
Rebecca, I saw you shaking your head. Do you have thoughts or ideas on that? Oh, you're muted still.
I'll get it, Rebecca. Oh, you got it.
There you go. Okay, what I, I was thinking that a listening, we need to hear from people, what, what they are experiencing. We need to hear from students in, in um, and, and we need to hear firsthand, you know, to, before we uh, start adopting policy, not policies, but new systems, we need to really understand that we, we don't want to just put a bandaid over it. We, we want to get to the to what's really experi- being experienced. That's all I have to say.
So I've got four. I'm just thinking in the box of goals for the coming school year, so not any wider than that. And I'm thinking if we have a goal that's, you know, some, some anti racism, equity, that kind of thing, and under it, we would have, conduct listening sessions, we would have board development specific to this topic. Oh, shoot, I have one more. And then finding out more about what is an equity lens? How do we use it? I know Salem Kaiser School District did a lot of work around this, so learning more about what they did and the outcome, maybe who they got as training. In the OSBA board meeting this morning, the, the topic of equity was, anti racism was huge, and it was basically board members calling out the OSBA team saying, this has to be something that OSBA can offer to schools, to districts, I'm sorry. I don't know that we'll get there in the coming years, so we're really going to probably have to dig around and think outside the box to bring in some of this training, but I think it's something that needs to be done. So board training, equity lens, listening sessions. What do you guys think? Should we add more to that? Should we? Do, do people want time to think about it a little bit?
There's probably more we can add, but that feels like a good starting point.
I know it doesn't sound like much, right? It's like three things, but I think that they're big. And it won't be like a one time thing, you know?
Brandy, I think it's good that you're taking leadership on this, but I also think this needs to be the whole board whole board's project, you know what I'm saying? So I think what could be useful is for one, one way, I don't know, this is not the only way to do it, but it might be useful if, if you're uh, got ideas or proposals for us, for the board to be able to agree together to take each step, I think would be useful. I'm conscious that Dave's not in the conversation right now, and I would, I would not want anybody to be on this conversation. Uh, I think it's useful for you to prod us along, but I think it's also important that the board have ownership, that the whole membership of the board have ownership of what we're doing.
Do we know if Dave's coming back?
I've emailed him, but there's no reason he would have seen it necessarily, so I don't know. I've asked him if he's coming back.
I just forgot it, my video guys. I listened to everything you said.
I agree with you, Ron.
Here's what I'm wondering about for this sort of work session, board retreat. All right, how does the board feel about this? Let's just start there. About what I've outlined, like if we have this one goal and these three action items.
Uh, I for one would love to hear um, the perspectives of other people and what they've had in our district. Um, I do think that you know, it's, this is a, a tough topic. It's a painful topic. It has a painful history in this country and we're, that's the reality of it. Um, I do think that there is also the you know, the reality of uh, the perception of people who aren't in these groups. If they hear that, uh, the school board is, you know, wants to hear from these groups, but not us. And how do we balance that? So yeah, I, I think, you know, what we call it uh, is important, on how we approach it is important as well.
I agree with Ron. Here's what I'm wondering about for this sort of work session, board retreat. All right, how does the board feel about this? Let's just start there. About what I've outlined, like if we have this one goal and these three action items.
Uh, I for one would love to hear um, the perspectives of other people and what they've had in our district. Um, I do think that you know, it's, uh, this is a, a tough topic. It's a painful topic. It has a painful history in this country and we're, that's the reality of it. Um, I do think that there is also the you know, the reality of uh, the perception of people who aren't in these groups. If they hear that, uh, the school board is, you know, wants to hear from these groups, but not us. And how do we balance that? So yeah, I, I think, you know, what we call it uh, is important, on how we approach it is important as well.
I agree with Ron that we have to approach this as a board and everybody has to have, see the importance and buy-in of it. And I don't want to assume that we have that until I, you know, till we hear it.
Yeah, certainly have my support. I, I think this is uh, uh, the right goal to, to prioritize right now, because it touches on everything. You know, one of the things we need to be prepared for, if we're really going to make this a priority, if we're going to make this a discussion that we want to have throughout the district and the community, is it, is not going to be easy. Just as we're seeing today, just among us, it's, it's not an easy conversation. And so we are asking more of our district and all the folks within it than we ever have before. And I'm personally more than okay with that. I'm eager for that, because I think it'll take us to a healthier place. to a healthier place, but we have to be aware and ready that it's going to be emotional. It's going to be challenging. We're going to have to work on creating structures that let folks have those emotions, that full range of emotion that is productive and not just venting or feeling or, you know, bringing something to the surface without any purpose. I don't think that serves anybody except to, you know, make somebody's personal emotions that much more raw. Finding a way to make that productive and move us forward is going to be important. And that's a challenge to, you know, balance something that has a structure to it, but also allows for those emotions to be there. But I think that's the right course for us.
I feel it's the right direction. I, I wonder about what the, what this means to the district, to Joe and Greg's and to, to coordinate this with us because it's something that we will need their, their help and their guidance through this. And in this time of dealing with a hybrid and, and all the, the situation there. But, but it's good work. I think it's something we, we, we need to do and it will be good for us to do. And I appreciate Bob and, and Brian's comments about making sure we, we don't inadvertently cause a firestorm in the way we present it.
I might just word it a little bit differently. I think, I think, and not digging in anybody, just, I think the firestorm already exists. What I don't want to do is tap into somebody's fire without giving them a, a path forward. So yeah, just little slight wording.
Does anybody want, actually two questions, two part question. We could do this one of two ways. We could sort of hash out the language as a group right now, or we could all contribute some language or we could task it to a board member or a team of board members. But I think this is just one of the goals, right? I think we need to keep going with the other goals that we want to talk about as well. And I, I worry that in the next hour, we're not going to have time to come to the language for each and every goal. I don't know how you all think about that or what you think about that. I guess, how would you all like to proceed on once we do kind of pick our goals, the language of the goals?
It may be that we would want to have one, one solution for all the goals that we deal with. So I don't know how to deal with it. I mean, we do need to know when we're ready to move on to the next goal in our discussion. So, but we might decide how to handle the wording with all three when we're done, if we're doing three.
I don't know if we have come to an agreement or if everybody's in agreement that what you've written down, Brandy, is what we want. I would hate to just move on the language piece without everybody being on board that these is, this is what we want as our goals moving forward.
Are you, what she's written down, you're referring to the the conversation?
Three, four, the three, four goals. I mean, I'm in agreeance, but I don't know if anybody is not.
Oh, yes. Okay. I'm still not sure what.
Do you mean like having three or four goals, goals total or the three goals I put under this first goal?
Like I think the language can wait. And I'm thinking of like how, what things are going to be under this goal and then moving forward. And then we'll figure out the language afterwards.
Yeah.
I'm just getting the points down because otherwise we're going to run out of time and I don't know that we're going to get further into.
Are you, are you writing this on the board agenda, retreat agenda someplace? I may not be seeing what everybody's seeing.
No, I'm just writing it in my notebook. I'm just taking notes as we go. Yeah.
I can't see your notebook.
So Brandy, underneath the, the one you're talking about right now, I think number two, you know, getting to, you know, students, parents, you know, committee members, you know, getting a broad stroke on this so we can get a feel for where a lot of people are really at. To me would be the most effective one to me. And then after that, the, the training would make probably more clear.
Okay, good. So Dave, what I heard was that under our anti racism goal, which is a horrible title, we'll have to figure out the wording. You would like to start with listening sessions. Is that, is that right?
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah, I think getting, because sometimes we keep spinning this around within our group or teachers or, you know, within small groups of parents or I think hearing what's going on out there would be healthy for us. Because we're probably going to hear stuff that's like Bob said, it's going to be tough and it'll be hard to hear, you know, but then it'll be good to hear. There'll be some good stuff out of it too. So it'll hopefully we get a bit of a balance on that and but we'll have to be ready to saddle up and hear some, hear some stuff.
Is everybody, as a board, are we comfortable with that being our number one goal with those three points underneath it?
Can you give me the three points?
Yeah, no problem. So the three points in no particular order yet would be listening sessions or development and then trying to think of the right wording again, but an equity lens, how do we as a district, after we've had these listening sessions and this board development, can this goal can this goal lead to us adopting an equity lens and each board member individually really feeling that and as a board, us really understanding what that means for our work moving forward?
I don't have any problem with that, but it just seems kind of short of actually accomplishing something in the district. Things all seem preliminary to the ultimate goal, which is to do, to make, help the district be better tuned to serve everybody equitably. And I don't see our, that goal getting there unless I'm missing something. Seems to me that there's another, the biggest step or the most important one is the one after that.
I don't, I'm worried that we can't get to that next step unless we do this step, but I'm just one person.
In other words, you're saying we have to understand the problem before we can fix the problem.
Or attempt.
Okay. Well, I, I think I understand that. I'm not going to dispute that. But it still sounds to me like the first three steps leading to the big goal, which is to help the district be better. And I don't know how to articulate that. I mean, sure, it's good three goals, but if we spend all year doing that, we won't have done what we needed to do. Because we would have just gotten ourselves ready, but not having done, helped the district get anywhere. I don't know, maybe this actually might be a place where Joe can help us think about, you know, timelines and so forth, but I don't know how long this will take. I don't know how to articulate the, I don't know how to articulate what I want. I just want something.
And Brandy, I don't want to sidetrack us, but something that kind of came up earlier that has a big impact on how we approach a lot of this stuff. You know, we had several board members express hesitancy around going out for a bond. And that is a huge that decision, you know, the go, no-go decision on that has a big impact on what our district can do, what our capacity is. So, you know, just something to think about is that that's that's a, a hesitancy that we hadn't expressed before. And there was probably some urgent, well, there is urgency in resolving that.
Yeah, that's a good point. Ron, when you were saying your concern about like, you know, what is the sort of the action on this, right? Like, how do we use, what do we, how do we use this to move forward? I think this is just one of our goals, right? We are still going to have, we need to have this bond discussion if that's a goal. We need to have the learning discussion and the safety discussion if those are also goals. And I, I think I just want to make sure that these are obtainable, they're realistic and they're measurable and that we can, like you said, all of us as board members know what these goals are and how we're achieving them. So I, I hesitate to get even more into that anti racism and equity because I want to ensure that we can look at other goals as well, but I, I don't know how everyone else feels about it.
Okay, I understand the practical problem. Yeah, let's think about that.
Hey Brady.
Yeah.
One thing we could do within our own districts in the next, you know, couple of weeks, though, just go out and talk to 10, 15, 20 people. Get a flavor of what people are thinking on this and then come back and each one of us report to, you know, the rest of the board. I mean, we could do it in short burst, five minutes piece, we'd be done in a little over half hour.
You mean, when, once we like complete our goals, once we agree on all the goals that we want for the year, then taking it out to our zones to get feedback? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, I mean, it'd just be kind of good to talk to people out there and try to do our best to get a balanced conversation on it and and then we could come back and see how that kind of goes with all of us and see what we come back with. Because if we all talk to 10, that's 70 people. That's not a bad sampling.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I understand what you're driving at, but a more open listening session, I would rather hear directly from folks than have you listen to, you know, my summary of what 10 folks said. Because it's still going to be filtered through me and the way I talk, as best as I try and, you know, express that. I'd rather hear from folks directly.
Bob, I would too. I just think, I was just trying to make it go a little faster. You know, at least it would give us a starting point of data. You know, kind of what we're hearing out there. But I agree. I mean, I'd like to hear from people.
Yeah. If everybody's, like, let's keep the conversation going in regards to the next goal that we think we want to try to tackle. Is everyone okay with that? And this is by no means you know, official and the wording needs to be worked, but I want us to leave the meeting with a sense of what our goals, our direction is going to be for next year, even if it's not yet polished into the writing. Is everyone comfortable with that?
I am.
Okay. So the other three that I wrote down were learning, which is the calendar, the hybrid system, professional development, safety around health and the bond. Who feels passionate about one of those to start with next?
Brady, can you say those one more time real quick?
Yep, learning, safety and the bond.
And the hybrid.
Yeah, the hybrid would be under the learning part. Yeah, yeah. But we just say, call it hybrid. That's fine too. Bob, do you want to do the bond conversation?
Yeah, you know, I think that's, I don't know, elephant in the room, that's a big topic that really shapes capacity on what we can do on everything else. So it might be good to hear more about what the hesitancy is.
And I also want to hear from board members and Joe, who were at the committee meeting a couple of weeks ago too, if you don't mind.
I was on the board, the, the bond planning commission and what, what has happened is that we were getting feedback that the bond committee wanted to, to see if, if it's still a possibility of being passed. And so they were going to be auditing or doing surveys and then coming back to us so that, and, and to see, do we need to do, do switches around or doing some changes to the bond to make it palatable? Or make it, make it passable? And that we, we were going to be then making a final proposal to the board sometime in July to be able to get it onto the ballot in August.
And Joe, wasn't there polling that was going to be happening in July? Can you talk more about that?
Sure. Yeah, we, we met, I want to say it was last week, Greg, you can correct me. I think I've lost track of time, but last week we talked about preparing to do not a full poll, but a poll to gauge the appetite for pricing levels and, you know, kind of the idea about, you know, where people are to have an, you know, just to have a concept of if we're really far out or if we're not. So we're going to work on that. I want to say it's in the first couple of weeks of July. Greg, what was the, do you remember the date?
Yeah, aiming for July 6th or at least that week to have it out. So our next task was to kind of, we're going to work Monday, I believe, on different rate, like what the packages would look like at lower rates so that we can test those in polling.
Right. So that would give us some, you know, within a couple of weeks here, we'll have a good idea of where our public is and, and, you know, the, the concepts around what could fit in within a bond package. And so you know, that will give us, that could give us some very clear direction either, either way and coming up pretty soon. So that initial poll at least would be about, about that and about funding levels, which I think is an important piece of information for us to have.
For those with reservations, do you want to tell us, talk about them?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Not, not making sense at this point. For those board members with reservations regarding the bond.
Okay, okay.
Would you, would you share with us? Or any board member that has a reservation around the bond? Yeah.
Well, for me, it's like I said earlier, I just don't know if that bond package applies to the world that we live in now. And also I, I, my political gut tells me that it's going to be really hard to pass a bond of that size and scale in the current economic environment.
My concern is similar. I think the we don't actually know yet how big of a permanent transformation the struggle with the COVID virus is going to make on us. We've identified some of the issues, including equity of access to electronic, you know, internet sources and in remote education are pretty significant. I don't know. Maybe, maybe a case could be made that, that, that the vision for the facilities we're looking at now are so far reaching that they've already taken into account all the variables that have now become obvious that weren't before. But I kind of doubt that. And I think it's, unless we have a really strong confidence that's the case and that's a message we can give people. I think that will compound the normal problem of of trying to pass a bond in a tough time. If the constituents look at that and say, well, does this show any evidence of adapting to the new situation? And I don't see that evidence right now. Maybe such evidence exists, but I don't see that evidence right now. And so I think we'd be trying to sell a poorly matched bond into a tough environment. And I'm not even sure I want the bond passed if it's poorly matched. So I would like to have a bond I can believe in for sure. So that makes me hesitant. I'm not saying I'm adamant against it, but I'm very hesitant. And I think that the evidence that I would need isn't going to come just from the, from the surveys. That'll be some of it be helpful, but it's not, I need to know more that, yeah, these facilities and the pricing that we use to, the assumptions we use to price those facilities already take into account the kinds of new information we have about how education might look for the next 10 years.
This is a sort of a minor add to it, but there was also discussion this morning regarding districts who are currently who have passed a bond and are in the current work of, of constructing. And they're seeing that the contractors are passing on the corporate activity tax to them. So you've got school districts who are So you've got school districts who are now being expected to pay the corporate activity tax that funds the SSA. Um, which of course was not in the bond uh, package of these districts past, you know, six months, a year ago, whenever it was. So I agree, it's an always changing environment right now.
And I assume construction costs will be affected by COVID restrictions. Although I, maybe by the time we get to building, those will be gone, who knows?
Well.
I was just gonna say, you know, I I've shared a lot of the similar, similar thoughts. You know, kind of where I've come around to is that. At at every juncture, as we've been talking about a bond, there's been, there's, there's always going to be a lot of. X factors and unknowns, the economy is going to do this, you know. Where I've kind of fallen to is that, yeah, we're at this huge inflection point, change point. Um, but we know we've done this assessment, we know that the the deteriorating state of our buildings, we know there are. Whatever happens or changes, there are kind of immediate things that need done. We also know that, you know, when you pass a bond, you don't have a. Building all drawn out, every single little detail. Um, that folks are saying, you know, this is where the chairs are going to go in that building. Uh, you have a a general plan. And then there's a process to help folks really help program out exactly what's going to go in that building, how that's going to look. You know, that's where, you know, some of the challenges. You always have, we will, we will always have on selling a bond that we've had all along is, well, what is a twenty first century learning environment look like? You know, that's a, that's a fairly vague term. Part of it now, you you know. Is going to be that a twenty first century learning environment has to be one that is. Prepared to serve our schools during a pandemic, not necessarily COVID nineteen, but you know, perhaps the next pandemic that comes around the corner. I think uh. Where I've, where I've come around to is that uh. With the state of our buildings, if we don't act now, we really are going to get into a position where uh, we start to have unsafe. Non-functioning sections, if not whole buildings, um, and I want to. Make sure that we don't get to that point. Um, we're not going to be able to answer all of the unknowns, we're not going to know all of the 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 factors that are going to be into play. Two years from now, three years from now, when we start construction on some of these things, but um. We've, because of, you know, the um. Change of leadership at the district level, you know, both on on the board and changing superintendents. We've lost a lot of time in moving forward with a bond. And I really am concerned about what would happen if we were to lose more time uh, to the current buildings we have.
I think it's pretty clear that this is a huge thing on our plate right now. Um, what are some? I guess, wha- how would people like to proceed with this in regards to it being a board goal?
I feel it should be a goal, it should be something that we, we continue to to look at. And to um, struggle with. I think we owe it to the, 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 the large committee that um. Worked through this process. And we owe it to the children of the future to. To struggle with this, I, if if we in the end. Decide what we can't do it, it's okay, it's a, it's, it's a goal. That we, that we at least address.
Randy, what's our deadline on getting this going again? What was that date? We do put.
Feel like there was an important date in August.
August fifteenth.
Okay.
I agree with Rebecca, I think it's something we put out there, Bob said it too, you know, we, 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 a lot of people put a lot of work into this. Um, but then Ron's right too, there's a lot changing. But if August fifteenth is the day, I say we pursue it pretty hard if it's a goal. And uh. Then that time to have to sit down with, with the board and Joe and say. It's, it's a good move to move forward or we take a step backwards for temporary. But I think a lot of work's already gone into it, we should at least pursue it on August fifteenth, don't you think?
Yeah, I'm not proposing we drop the pendulum right now, as I said, I want more information. But I think it might be, it might be impossible for us to have. Help from the board, the bond committee. Uh, to maybe help develop a second option for us to consider in August. And that is a scaled back version of the bond that does address those maintenance issues that are so important. But maybe uh, doesn't it commit ourselves to rebuilding the Dundee School yet or some of the other big ticket items that aren't as urgent? And that we might have to come back for another bond in a year, for the rest of a year and a half, whatever. My point is that if I don't, unless the, we get back data that says, yes, the designs that the, the, the cost that we've developed. Are already take into account the kinds of variables that we'll need to deal with the future and unknown future. Uh, it's going to be harder for, I think, for us to justify a big bond based on an old model. Um, but, I mean, that would be the option, to say, give us two options now and um. So that the goal would be to make the proper decision about the bond. To one that's tailored to the needs and the, and the, and the realities of the, to the immediate, you know, to our most urgent needs and to the realities of our taxpayers.
Agree.
And I would agree, I think that makes a lot of sense, you know. A professional poller might say that that's insane, that you can't pass a bond. This year and then go out for one and then in a year or two, I don't know, I'm, like I said, I've said before, you know. We are elected officials, but I'm not a politician, I don't know that calculus, but I agree with you, Ron, I would much rather go out with a bond. That was suited to what we need rather than what would be politically expedient.
And also what Brian said, I mean, it's. Got to be realistic with the chances that bond are passing with all the current things going on. You know, we don't want to go. You know, hail Mary on this thing, we want to go out with a strong chance to pass it.
Would you go for a screenplay?
Force metaphors aren't inclusive of the whole group, okay, so I don't feel.
I don't bowl, so I don't know any of these.
That was baseball, I thought.
Gotcha. So what do we want? I'm just, I'm going to bring us back to that sort of measurable. Goal, what is our measurable goals under this? Bond discussion. Or it it's sounding like it's a goal of the board for the coming year, am I correct on that?
Yes.
Expedient in my mind, we have to make a decision by August fifteenth.
I mean, I would like us to take care of some of that deferred maintenance for sure. Even if we don't go for the big uh, one forty. But. Definitely take care of what needs to be taken care of.
Yeah, I would also be um. I would like to see the, the plan B be a possibility. Maintenance.
So would. I guess this is an action item, I'm, would one of the. Goals under this goal be to continue to work with the long range, or I'm sorry, it's not called that anymore, the bond development committee? I think we need to continually lean on their work and their work going forward, is everybody. Comfortable with that, okay?
Uh, I think that's, that's a real important step because it was one of the things which helped influence me was, you know. Uh, not being on, but attending that last meeting. I kind of expected a lot of people to have similar thoughts to what I was having and and Ron and Brian were, and when folks didn't have that. Reaction, it. It changed my view about the, how high that that hurdle might be. So, yeah, their, their work has been extremely helpful.
And it's. Sounding like. The bond package, the amount, the scope of what in it is, is. A little uncertain at this point and we'll have to rely on polling in the bond development committee and some other things. So as a board, what other, what else can we put under this goal?
Well, I think that it's clear if it, if we do decide to go for it. We as a board have to support it and work toward for it to pass.
So that means we want a, a bond package that the board in general is. Generally comfortable with, I mean, we may not agree with all details about it, but we can support it.
Right.
So that's, that's what we're, we're talking about some of the variables that are pertinent to various of us about that, I think that's good, so yeah.
Joe, is it possible to get um, some questions added to the survey that they're going to do? Around doing a just maintenance only bond?
Uh, so that, that's actually, that's what we were talking about when uh, we looked at scale, you know, so the scaling of the bond of of the kinds of. Things that you would do, um, and so that's, that's how they'll probably form those questions, so things like, you know, if you group them. You've got generally safety, security, resiliency and systems is about twenty, what, twenty-three percent? Um, if you look at uh, the twenty first century part that we were talking about earlier, that's twenty, that's seventeen percent, about twenty-four million. Um, and so we're trying to look at, you know, like if you were going to do this all except. Uh, maybe the new school, that would be, that could be a package, or you might look at it for doing uh, the maintenance and the other things. Uh, but not replace um, CTE as a reference, that might be, and we're trying to figure out what our packages would look like. One of the things that we have been cautioned against multiple times is not to look at the numbers we have and then. Whittle them down to something smaller than say that you can still do those things at a lower amount. Uh, rather than just looking at the package and say, you know what, if you're not going to do Dundee School, then just take that out, or if you're not going to do. CTE, then you take the whole amount out, that's how you would, you know, build a, to structure your package into smaller numbers. Um, so that's, does that answer your question? Is that, is that what you're thinking? You're thinking about other kinds of questions to add to it?
Uh, no, I mainly just want to have a uh, sense of whether or not a maintenance only bond would have a. You know, better chance of passing in the fall or not.
Sure, okay, and that's sort of what we're gonna, we'll have to, we're gonna look at scaling the numbers to figure out where that, that price point is. Um, one of the challenges in a maintenance only bond is that you don't have much of a story to tell. It's not very exciting for people to get behind, and that's, that's been another thing that we've talked about is there's no. In that kind of a case, there's no anchor project for people to really point at, it's just like, well, you're fixing fascia boards and cracked sidewalks and. Plumbing things that Mike is never going to see or whatever those things are, so those, those can be a bit challenging, but. But we are gonna, we are going to look at multiple price points because uh, we have to be sensitive to that and it may end up being far more. Of the replacement, modernization, safety and security kind of stuff, because you can at least talk about those things, you want to make sure that every building gets uh, something, so. Um, but yeah, that's something that the work that we're going to try to put together this week. Um, I've written some of that down, just hearing your, all of your uh, responses to that about how we would form the package that we've gone and pull. So we could put that on, that as a, as a focus, as a focus, one of the um. New uh, number, um, I'm not, I'm losing my words too.
Yeah, we literally talked about developing three different packages at three different price points and one of them definitely would be. Kind of a bare bones like you talked about, and so we'll be pulling those, and then I'll go to the bond development committee, you'll all see that as well.
That's excellent, and and I don't want to discuss it right now, but an idea that's occurred to me is I don't know if anybody's ever tried to. Do a bond that we, that we'd say, well, this is step one, and then in a couple of years we'll be back with step two. That may be a terrible idea, may be a good idea, I don't know, but it'd be interesting to hear about that.
I brought that exact thing up with um, our consultant and he said, no, you don't ever want to do it that way, you want to decide. You know, you can have all your internals of what you decide, but you want to make a plan and go for it.
Okay.
And if you do something else later, you do something else later.
That's why I'm not a good political consultant.
Well, I'm a political science professor and I'm apparently not a good political consultant either, so it's more embarrassing in my case.
So, right now, rough draft under bond, I have continued to work with the bond development committee. We have. Ensure that the bond packages. In an equity lens, and like I said, all rough. And the third would be to support the bond package put forth to voters. Is there more we want to add to that or change or take out? No?
I think it's a pretty good draft, we, you know, we can look with it.
Yeah, yeah, okay, um. Who, do we want to move on to learning or safety? We've got about thirty minutes left. Does anybody feel strongly about one of those other learning aspect or safety?
I think in the current environment, safety has to come first.
Okay, Brian, what are you thinking?
I. Don't see how we can safely. Put kids in classrooms in the fall. In the current environment.
Okay.
So where does that leave us?
Well, wouldn't, I mean, it's, it's got to be an actionable, measurable kind of goal, so how are we? How are we as a board helping drive that or drive the safety of students?
Um. I would say that we have to uh, be clear uh, to ourselves and to the superintendent that. The safety of our students and our community is paramount and um, we. Expect an educational model that reflects that.
I would, I would. Speak up against that because it. It's not our role to determine. What, I mean, yes, we are very concerned about the safety of our students and our community and our staff. But we're not the ones, when, when you say you don't see a poss- that the, the um. Children won't be in, you don't see it being in the fall. We, we're not the ones who, who close schools down to begin with. We're, we're not the ones who make the decisions and it's not up to Joe to make the decisions, he's following. Um, the Oregon Health Association and the ODE, so I don't, I don't see how that can be. A goal for us as a board.
So I think we could probably say, it's not a very useful standard, but we could probably say that the board's goal is to make sure that students. That that the decisions about how to handle students are driven by safety. The problem is what, that doesn't decide to to identify what the standard will be and. Um, our, our general approach so far has been to rely on. The directions of the state and county as to what's safe. I think it's in theory possible for us to have a more demanding standard, but probably not a less demanding standard. Um, but I don't know how we would decide that we know better. So that's an interesting problem for us. Uh, saying that we're going to let our decisions be driven by safety is sort of a. Obvious idea, it doesn't really tell us how to answer that question because it doesn't say what standard it would be, but at least it's something. That we're not going to adopt the safety issue, when we think about this. But the safety issue is, I mean, it's kind of a, it's, it is the biggest issue, I agree. Uh, it's not an absolute issue, I mean, if it was absolute, we wouldn't let our kids step outside the house. Uh, so we are always trading a little bit of safety off for something else, like that they actually get an education or something. So I don't know how, I mean, I think our goal, if it were fully elaborated, which would express that, there is a balancing problem here.
Well, and I think as we talk about safety. Are we talking safety in general, or are we kind of focused more specifically now just on COVID nineteen? And you know, maybe one way to get at it is. You know, something along the lines of, you know, the board will actively assure that. Uh, the district is meeting OD, OHA guidelines and balancing those with.
the district is meeting OD, OHA guidelines and balancing those with local concerns. You know, because one, one challenge we all have is to balance what, what is my, you know, rational, science-based following epidemiological experts view on this and what is my emotional fear of this? And that, that's a real challenge for everybody through COVID-19 is striking that balance. And you know, whether we say it out loud or not, but that's something we're going to have to do as a board is to strike that balance between, you know, what is scientific rational and what is, what is emotional? And that's a tough balance to strike.
I agree, Bob. I think we need to, safety is a big word, right? Is it safety in the context of our discussion around anti-racism and equity? Is it safety in regards to physical health around COVID? It's a big umbrella. And I think the more we can define it for a one-year school goal, the more helpful it will be for us. Dave, you're muted. We can't hear you.
All right. Uh, we have to remember, like San Diego is offering three options, which that's pretty difficult to do. You know, they're offering hybrid, they're offering in school or online. And that was received pretty well by the public. But even though we say we're going to be open, there's going to be certain parents are going to put their kids in our school. So far, all this, all the data shows that kids are not getting sick. And a lot of parents are going to have their kids at school for a lot of various reasons. A lot of them have learned that teachers are pretty amazing. And the kids want to go back to school and kids aren't getting sick. But there's still going to be parents that aren't going to send their kids back to us. They're just going to probably opt for online. And if our online isn't kind of switching here, if our online isn't super strong, better than the springtime, people are going to probably take their kids out, homeschool or private school. That's not everybody, but there will be that happen.
That might get more into, if we, we need to still talk about the learning, the learning goal as well. And I think that would be maybe where some of those things are addressed, Dave. Do you think?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go off on that. I, I, you're Brian saying, but I think a lot of parents are going to want their kids back. And then some parents aren't on the safety end of that. They're going to make that decision regardless of which way we go. That's what I've heard out there.
University, George Fox is preparing, generally they're preparing for on-campus students, but they don't think it'll be at the normal, normal format. Not everybody may be able to be on campus. So they are also planning three forms of delivery at once, on face-to-face, the synchronous online and the unsynchronous asynchronous online. So all that for one class, it would be in three modes. That would be the typical experience we're expecting. So it's not unusual.
So what I've heard so far about safety is it's in regards to physical safety, physical health safety with the virus so far. And the, the two main points that I've heard were that one of them actively assure the district is in compliance with ODE and OHA guidelines are being followed. And the second is balancing those guidelines with community needs. Those are, those are big.
There's lots of room for waffling in there. That's not ideal.
Well, I wouldn't limit it to just physical safety. Like I mentioned before, I think that the learning safety of can I express myself in the room? Or not, but that's attached to everything else that we've been talking about.
Isn't this going to come down to Bob or I'm sorry, Joe? Me with ODE and, and they're going to kind of have the big say on, you know, if we're in hybrid or not, aren't they?
No, we're supposed to develop our plans based on the OHA guidelines for each school individually and then as a district. And so, you know, the document essentially has two sides, two columns. One column is the, or are the protocols for following the OHA guidelines. And the other column is about what your, you know, your action steps that may be about teaching and learning could be about physical spaces. You know, what we're trying to do now is figure out how we can do cohorts of students, groups of students that allow for us to have the proper spacing. And also, you know, be able to bring some kids in and other kids not, and then flip it around and you know, whether we're doing alternating days or whatever, but it's really up to the district to develop the plan, whatever the plan is, and then get the plan approved. So you know, we're looking at the, all the, all the options. I can all but guarantee we will not be fully in person all the time. We don't actually, even, we don't even have the physical space to do that if we were going to be cutting our cohorts in half. Not even talking about the number of staff we have. And you know, while we do talk about kids a lot in this, you have to also realize that we will have staff who will be at home. And so we will actually have less capacity rather than more capacity to do all these things in person, because we will have certain staff members who are at risk and will be put at risk because, you know, while children don't get sick, the adults certainly do. And if we start looking at the cross-section of adults that we have who work in our system and putting those people at risk is a huge concern for me because they are, you know, the people who work for us and they're also the ones who do the, the teaching. And so, you know, if you're down, let's say 10, 15% of your staff, because they need to be home. You know, we have to have a model that is able to respond to that, or we just double our employee cost for that 10 or 20% of people who are home, because now you're paying for a substitute to be in person. And so there are, there are several other complicating factors well beyond kids and masks and all the other things that we hear people be upset about, or I want my kid in school. We have to, the broader system is, is really about, you know, managing your adults and also providing opportunity for kids. So we're still in the middle of all of that kind of design. I think to Brian's original point, I am concerned about people's safety because I know that this is really hard and it's, it's invisible. You know, it's not a, it's not like people are walking around breathing red paint. So you can tell, you know, who is, you know, who's infected and who's not, you know, there's a lot of challenge around that. I know that people are also frankly, think it's over and, you know, watch case counts go up and people are out enjoying themselves at restaurants and other things. And I think we still have a couple of months to better understand where we're going to be. So we're trying to also make plans that we can pivot either direction. If we have to pivot to go, I don't think we're going to pivot to fully in-person. I mean, we can do that. That's pretty easy for us because we know how to do that. But we have to be able to pivot back to whatever the distance learning looks like at the drop of a hat, because we could get an executive order that says, guess what? Not opening your buildings. You're done. So now you have to have that sort of thing. And it can't be the distance learning that we had to cobble together at the end of last year. We also know that. We know also that people will, are looking at both our online school, COA, and other online schools. And frankly, we have to be ready to, to take on, you know, people who want to do that full-time for the folks who can do it. And you also look at employees who have small kids and if our schedule doesn't match, match the schedule of their kids, because let's say they live in Sherwood and their kids are going Tuesdays, Thursdays, but they have to work Monday, Wednesday, you know, there's a whole other set of those things too. So there are a lot of complicating factors around that. Safety is a huge part of the plan and that has to get approved anyway. So your plans have to be approved before you can even move forward on those. And then, you know, you're working with humans and humans are always really great at following all the rules all the time. And so how do you ensure that we, after you put in some rules, that we actually follow those rules and do those rules on an every individual and group basis? So there, there are significant challenges in this from a, just a pure safety standpoint, but then also just operationally, you know, how do we operate this with possibly fewer adults in the buildings based upon, you know, what we know about, about risk factors and what have you. So I, I think we're, we're ways away from knowing what we're actually going to look like. We're going to do our best to create a model. And then, you know, we've talked about doing a, a community survey around here, some of the models to think about. And you know, what do you think about this? And would you send them with that? You know, Greg did a huge survey with kind of following up on what our distance learning experience was. And yeah, we hear from lots of people who say, I'm just going to send my, you know, we, we have lots of demands have come in there. So I'll just put it that way. Calling out in specific demand, but, but there are people all over the place. So I think we will do our best to develop some plans. And you, of course, as the board, you'll be looking at all of those, providing feedback, asking hard questions about them. It's the same thing with a communicable disease plan that includes COVID. We've got to get that in front of the board and you have to discuss that with us and, and have your questions. And so there's a lot, there's still a lot happening in all that. It's a good goal because I think all of next year will be disrupted in some way, whether we come back to all in person at some point in the, in the year. We're still going to be trying to catch up and work on all those things. And so what does that look like from a, a learning standpoint and an equity standpoint? You know, how do we do all those things? So I, I think it's a good goal. But for me, the learning and the safety, where we are right now, they are inextricably intertwined for the coming several months. And I don't know, you know, I don't have an end date for it. Nobody does. So I see those two as, as working hand in hand.
So could our goal in this area involve expression or commitment to supporting the staff and all this work? I mean, Joe's just described the worst summer planning job he's ever had in a time when we have maybe the least resources for it that we've ever had. And so I think, I don't know what we can do as a board, but that's kind of too bad that I don't know. And maybe that should be part of our focus on the school.
I agree, Ryan. I wrote down something like work closely with district staff to support plan. We can move that around, but it goes back to what we kind of put in the bond of our continued work with the bond development committee. I think we need to call out on the, the goal that we are working with district staff on this as needed. That doesn't mean, Joe, that we're going to come in and do it. Don't worry about that, but just.
You're more than welcome.
I don't want to.
I'll send you the framework.
I'm good. Okay. Can we move on to learning? Or is there anything else about safety that somebody wants to really make sure we add in?
Well, and as mentioned, a different dimension of safety, and we don't really have anything about that on there. I don't know if it actually fits here perfectly or what, because it's a different thing entirely. Well, pretty much entirely. So I don't want to drop it. I just, I don't know what to do with it.
Okay, I put it in here. And we can work going forward on language and how we, how that piece fits into it and the approach.
We better move on to the last one because we only have 15 minutes.
So learning, I had calendar start times, the hybrid learning model and professional development. So let's start with the calendar. Can we, can we put calendar and start time together? Or would people prefer to have that in two separate areas?
To me, they're interrelated.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. So let's have that. So if, if this is a goal of the board, what do we want our working goal around calendar and start time to be?
Well, start time, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Go for, go for it, Ron.
I'll start, I'd, I'd separate, I mean, like, I'm not separating them from the goal, but they're, they're a little bit different on the start time. Well, actually they're not. I mean, in both of them, we need to hear from all the constituents because I'm not sure, although we have to be careful to listen to everybody. There are some constituents here in both that will not necessarily come forward, but who will be affected. And so I want to make sure that they are all listened to as we do decisions about this.
I think this would be the opportunity to have an advisory committee or an ad hoc committee to look at, to work on this.
I think so too. I think we also have to build in some kind of flexibility in there because it could come down to the district saying, we really think we should take this six-week break over the winter. And that could be wildly unpopular with a committee. I don't know, but I think we do need to build in something within the goal in regards to like this is the plan, but the plan could change at any point.
I was going to say, I think two, it might be helpful to, to look at this at two different timeframes, you know, scheduling for this upcoming year is really going to be more COVID-driven than it is going to be. You know, our decision and a committee. So pulling together that committee, looking more for the long-term, you know, kind of, this is a great time, I think, to embrace this view that we're going to reinvent our system. We're going to really take a look top to bottom at what needs to be changed. It's a great time to draw in constituents in a really productive concrete way. And it's a way that, you know, I think as we start to roll in using more of this sort of ad hoc advisory committee that it, I really believe strongly they should always be chartered and have a definitive charter, what their purpose is, what their timeline is. And I think part of that charter should include, you know, equity and inclusion and making sure that we're hearing a broad range of voices. Not just reaching out to the people who are, you know, easy to reach out to and often involved in community activity. You know, a lot of those folks, because that's a, a big part of their, their lives are going to be involved and that's a good and healthy thing. We need to make sure that we're looking beyond that. But I think the big thing is having two different timelines. The schedule this coming year is, is a COVID schedule and beyond that is what we're looking at. Well, I, I don't believe we were ever planning on looking at changing the times for this year. Kind of made that decision last spring or winter that we worked on. To me, you know, I, we, it should be to examine the start times and see if there's a better way to do it based on community feedback and scientific reason.
Okay, what about, so what I have so far is like a number one thing under learning regarding the calendar would be create an ad hoc committee to conduct outreach regarding start time and calendar. And ensure that the ad hoc committee represents the community as a whole and creating a variety of populations. We can word that to make it better, but that's kind of the gist of that first one. Does that encompass what people were, were thinking?
Yeah, Brady, I think, you know, those last two comments were really good because like Bob said, we're we're probably looking at the following year, but we also knew this was going to be a long-term thing to make sure we do get all that information, to make sure this is a good transition. So like Joe just said, though, you know, he's going to have to submit these plans based on right now, nothing what we've even done close to what we were kind of starting about start timers, you know, and traditional.
Yeah, I think there can be language in the beginning of that goal that we recognize that the 2021 calendar and schedule will be driven by health needs.
I would, I would like, I would volunteer for that committee if you want some board members, but I don't know what you're looking for. I think it's a really important goal. I mean, everybody's made comments on it. But then I just always go back to Joe's comment that kind of cooled our jets in that one meeting. When, when he said, hey, you know, for every person who loves this model, there's another person who's going, whoa, dude, this is hard. So it will be a hard change. But it, it's it's kind of exciting to, to think about, you know, if we do go back to any semblance of traditional school.
So what about, I forget, I think maybe it was Bob who brought up the hybrid model in regards to the, a learning goal. Is it, was it you, Bob?
Yeah, you know, I mentioned it, and I think from the board level, the main thing is going to be we need to figure out how we're going to monitor success. You know, I think it's been sort of a double-edged sword with the distance learning that we did this spring. You know, I think a lot of the success came from the fact that, you know, testing and a lot of the, you know, the things that were geared more towards traditional schooling, those were rolled back. But it also is going to make it real challenge for us to have any objective criteria about what did students get out of that experience? And I just want to, I don't know what the answer is, but I want to make sure that we're looking at, you know, what objectively are we going to? Looking at, you know, what objectively are we gonna measure for success?
Bob, I think we gotta get to the, the kids and the parents, you know, more often and find out where they're at. Because if they're really not liking it, we need to hear that. If they're really liking it, we wanna hear that.
Yeah, uh, for sure, that's part of it, but that's, again, that's subjective, you know. Whether, you know, whether my kid likes or doesn't like math class is different from whether they're learning the material. And that's what I'm getting at is, you know, I, I always have, always will really highly value, and I think it's a, a big important part, that subjective element. But um, the objective side is gonna be something that's gonna be harder to do. In this whole new system that's never existed before. So there's no structure for how you measure that system.
About asking the teachers.
The distance learning survey that uh, Joe referred to, we did ask all of these questions and the message loud and clear from. Parents, staff and students is what they want is to come back full time in person in the fall. Um, so we know that that's the, the want, we know that's the desire. We have these other constraints about whether that's possible. Um, so I think, you know, we've asked a lot of the questions you're talking about already, and I think the question Bob is asking is the right one, is how do we. If we are forced to do distance learning, how do we do that better? How do we evaluate how we're doing it? That's what I'm hearing.
I'm hearing that and I think we also need to keep it in the lens too of, of how are we. Giving those kids extra help who need extra help and how are we making sure that those kids are supported and those families are supported? Be it with technology or extra time in school or. That's a rambling on sort of sentence that isn't a stated goal, but I'm, through my head is.
Hey, Joe, um, I know you've, you know, you have talked about how we, you basically have these two tracks. Uh, hybrid and distance learning and, you know, technically everyone in the classroom, which we don't think is a realistic possibility. When will we uh, get to, you know, see some more meat on the bones of what those two tracks look like?
That's a great question. Um, in the next few weeks, anyway, we're trying to put together our initial uh, planning things. So we're hoping by. Um, I mean, we have to actually have it approved by the ODE. I'm gonna get this, make sure I get this date correct. We have to have that done by August fifteenth is the late, the latest time that they could um, accept those, you know, we'd have to have it par before then. So. Uh, in the next couple of weeks, we should have some initial plans. We have to have also, uh, and this is probably about scheduling another board meeting. Um, for all of us here. Uh, because we'll also have to go through our um, communicable disease plan that includes COVID, which is. You know, and, and additional step, something that we uh, pulled originally um, out of policy, but also we have to have a plan available to it. So. Uh, I don't, I'm gonna, I'm gonna find the right date for you in just a second, but we have to have this. Uh, at least some initial planning. We're gonna have to have this all done in the next few weeks. I know that the first week of July is gonna be very quiet around here. For anybody who wants to escape a little bit, but we've got a, a lot of work to do. Um, coming up to that. So, uh, principals have kind of been uh, playing around with some of the plans on the stuff still up on my board as we were doing those things.
August sixth looked like the final deadline for board to approve, so probably end of July. Uh, maybe that second meeting in July is where you would see here's, here's kind of the plans at this point.
I had a date thing, there it is.
And are you submitting both tracks for approval, or is it just based on what the regulation is at that moment? This is the one.
We will, yeah, we'll base upon that. If, I, I believe it'll be a, a hybrid submission that also has other options for people. Because there will be some kids who are, of course, um, immunocompromised, and so we'll have to have it available for that. So it has to include. Additional options, but the primary model is most likely a hybrid model. Uh, and then what the details of our, uh, of that will be, you know, further discussed. I don't, like I said, I, I don't think we'll be any closer to being a fully in person model. Um, by the end of July. So that, that's, that's probably not likely. So our plan's going to be uh, some. Uh, form of a hybrid model. And that's the, the detail we're working out. I, we looked at doing, for a while, we was doing half days and having two groups. But that, of course, doubles your busing costs and is probably just financially not feasible for us. So. Um, we know there are some places out there, you know, way out uh, in eastern Oregon that are doing, that have more space or. Um, have fewer kids and so they're able to do different kinds of models. But ours is most likely a hybrid model. And then with options for both staff and students to be uh, fully online if necessary.
And um, is that oft out to be online only going to be available to everyone? Or just to kids who can demonstrate some sort of medical need?
No, we're not gonna make people demonstrate that. You know, everybody has a different, um, you know, everybody for their children has a, a different threshold. And I think that that's important to keep in mind. Um, you know, it may be that they want to do online school, online school like through COA. Um, but it also could be that they want to be part of the class that they would normally be part of in case we were to come back. And so there would be some. Um, you're doing both online and in person uh, among a group of kids, you know. We, we're thinking about, let's say, as a friend, since somebody could not go to school for a while, either they became uh, sick or they became exposed. And they were gonna be home for two weeks. Um, you wouldn't wanna try to shift them over to a whole other program and then shift them back because then you're just losing. You know, all kinds of ground. And so what does it look like to be able to provide sort of parallel experiences for kids who are home or uh, in the class? Um, that also allows us to use some of our staff who are not gonna be uh, able to be in person. They could manage some of those things. We have to build in time for our teachers and um, assistants to uh, plan and be prepared to, to do those things during the week as well. So if they're doing some kids in person and some online, they'll need some time during the workday to do that as well. And so there's, that's part of the plans of being built into them, which is, means most likely it'll be a shorter school day. Um, and fewer days a week. And then that allows us to, to provide the, the time for people to do things asynchronously. Some people have asked for uh, synchronous times as well. So we have to work through the details of what that looks like. But by and large, it's gonna be a hybrid system with then caveats for people who um, are uncomfortable with putting their kids into school. And then some people will choose to do COA fully, which is okay too. I mean, we're, we have. Um, been preparing to be ready for that because that is also a K through twelve system. We've done far fewer elementary school kids in the past, but that doesn't mean we can't do it. We have, you know, access to curricula and. If we need to shift some teachers to that, we could be able to do that as well. Since it's a, it's a program and not really a separate school uh, within the system.
Thank you. And thank you for, for all the work that you and the rest of the staff are doing on this. I. It's a lot in a short time.
Yeah, thank you. It's insanity. Um, just because it's, you know, keeps shifting. But, you know, I do appreciate having some clear guidance as much as it feels onerous. It is nice to have some clearer guidance coming um, from the Department of Ed because I know they're working like crazy to get that out too.
Okay, it's five o'clock. So I think we have taken a good swing at board goals. I think we still have a ways to go. Uh, we didn't get to, I think there's probably more discussion around board goals specific to this hybrid model. And also to the professional development that was mentioned. So I would propose we pick a date in mid-July for our Juliette House training. And then leave some time into that day as well, so we can really solidify these goals. And in the meantime. Can work on some wordsmithing and polishing. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Randy, do you know how long the Juliette House training time is?
I believe they said two hours. How does the eighteenth look? July eighteenth, it's a Saturday.
That will not work for me. That's uh, the date we've already invited people for a graduation party for my boys.
Okay.
Was that an invitation, Ron?
I don't know. Did you get one?
Oh, I didn't get one. That's weird.
Uh, okay. That puts me in a bad spot.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Does it have to be a Saturday? Could it be a Sunday? Or is, does anybody have a no, a hard no on a Sunday?
I hate to be difficult, but it's a pretty hard no for me.
Okay. What about?
I got my invitation.
Fourth. Um, I could do the eleventh, but it would have to be again in the afternoon. What does the eleventh look like for people?
I'm available on the eleventh.
Okay, Rebecca, Ron and Inez are all muted.
I can make it work.
Eleven, it would be probably starting around one. I'm thinking maybe starting around one.
That could work for me. How long, how long?
I mean, I'm thinking probably at least one to five because we would want two hours for the training and then a couple of hours to make sure that. We're on track with the goals.
I'm, I can make the eleventh work too.
Yeah, I'm good too.
Okay, so the eleventh, one to five. Hey. What, Dave?
Got a Zoom meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um. I'm, I'm thinking maybe the first step and kind of getting the wording correct on these goals is to type up what I have and share it with you each individually. And you can give me feedback uh, or, or ideas on wording. Um, and then. Depending on if I get enough stuff, maybe I can either then come to the media on the eleventh with kind of what everybody said, or maybe kind of my condensed version. And we can talk about that point. Does anybody have ideas on how they'd like to really move forward and ensure that, again, these are the board goals?
I mean, I'm not opposed of you doing that. I think that one way, like we did in the past for um, Joe's evaluation. Is if we're doing it on Zoom, you can screen share and then we could look what you're typing or whatever modifications. For wording purposes.
I like that too.
Works for me.
So sort of following that model, do you think it would be helpful if I put out what we have right now? And then everybody kind of types in their individual thing and then we come back together and all sort of hash it out. Okay.
Yes, yes.
That sounds like a plan. Is there anything else?
Oh, thanks, Brandy.
Great. Call us out of order. Thanks, everybody. And thanks AJ to our one audience participant. All right, have a good rest of your weekend.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.